Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Plan. June 27. And Buckland? Ken, can you turn off one of your devices? All right, thank you, Ken. Call the meeting to order. Take a roll call. You have Sam Corbett. Al Schultz.
Here.
Sherry Clark.
Here.
Mike Baptiste.
Here.
Jane Gleason.
Here.
And myself, Mike King here. Start right in with preliminary business. Approval of the meeting minutes from the planning board meeting of June 13, 2022. Has everybody had a chance to review? Take a vote to approve.
Discussion with, I accept them with, when you answer the vote, Monique is gonna fix the spelling of my name everywhere, please.
Correct, yes, that's been done, yes. Also, Mr. Chair, there is one comment that, actually, on that blue tab that you have right there.
Yep.
Mr. Buckland wanted to note specifically, I believe, the amount, if you just turn to that blue tab. So I'm gonna incorporate that into the record. I believe it was the amount of fill that was removed from the site regarding, I can't remember the case.
So we're gonna read this into the record so that Ken can add it.
Please.
So there's a handwritten note concerning the meeting of the 13th concerning Route 25, where the owner of the land responded to our question from Mr. Buckland. And that he stated, and I do remember the statement, that he believes he's removed anywhere between 80,000 and to 100,000 cubic yards of material from the site. So we're gonna read that in so that it can be added to the minutes. Entertain a motion to approve that.
Actually, I would like to, I have a comment. I got to going through these late. I'm not used to getting them so quickly, honestly. And I just got some edits to our assistant town planner this evening.
Okay.
So not sure how we handle that.
I would say let's start off with the edits.
Okay.
You don't really wanna just postpone approval for?
Let's postpone.
Postpone the?
I would prefer to postpone because it's some substantial. Yeah, and it's picking.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to postpone the approval pending pending edits to be made by the assistant planner.
Moved.
Second.
You have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Kyle Schultz for a vote. Sherry?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
6-0-0.
Application number 15-223127 Cranberry Highway A and R applicant Peter Caloris, I hope I don't screw that up. Map 8 lots 1022A and 1023C. Just for clarification, because this caught my eye. The agenda says 3127, the paperwork says 3125. Which address is it? Do we know?
Um, the application that we presented is for 3127.
Okay, because what was stamped by the town clerk was for 3125.
Um, on the application?
That's what I have here, application for endorsement.
Yep, I have that as well. I have the 3125A. I have 3127 on our
The drawings.
On our plan. And 3127 is what we had, I think, on the application. If we have the proper map and lot number.
Charlie, can we safely modify that?
3125 on the, it is signed the applicant.
Signed by the applicants, but it's been stamped by the town clerk, so it's, it's a record with wrong info. Safely.
Just a screen.
Okay. Okay.
Plan says 3127.
Right, it's just, the only reason I questioned it was because it had been stamped by the town clerk.
Yeah.
You know, it's been stamped into the record.
That's noted on the, noted on the drawing is 3127. 3125 is the neighbor.
3125 is the
Master Muffler.
Is not the, is not the lot that we're dividing. We're dividing lot 3127. So the address of the applicant is 3125 Cranberry Highway.
So Master Muffler is the
Correct.
Same owner as?
He's the applicant. He's the owner of 3125. Vision is taking place on 3127.
So what's, what is stamped in is not the address of the, of the subject project. It's their app.
Right.
It's the applicant's.
Nice, that makes no sense. Okay. Not that we've gotten past that.
Well, good. I'm glad we cleared one hurdle. So what we're, what we're proposing to do is divide lot Lot A into, unmapping Lot A into, take, making conforming lot for that and then taking the excess area, calling it a parcel in dividing it from 3120s, taking it from 3127 and creating a parcel not to be considered a building lot.
The proposed parking, this is for overfloor parking.
Yes, it is.
Plot parking is taking place on parcel B.
3125, yes.
And that's what the easement is for? So they can get to it? Because there's no, no curb cut there?
I'm looking to see where that easement is.
I, I know this lot and one driveway.
There was, they were making an arrangement to go from 3125 onto that, onto that parcel. There was not a separate easement shown on, on this plan to, to access that, but it's my understanding that two parties have agreed to create an easement across the lot for access to parcel B.
So putting an easement across Lot A to access from 3125 to this parcel B?
Yes. Utilizing the same entrance off Cranberry Highway.
So because we're creating a parcel, Charlie, it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to conform to the access rule.
Doesn't have to, so long as it's stated on the plan. Said it's not a separate building.
Yeah, so long as it has a notation that says it's not a separate building lot, you're okay.
Yeah, which it does.
Yeah. You're fine with that.
Okay.
And additionally, it does contain, I think, the note that you're referring to about compliance with zoning that's in the lower right-hand corner, just below the planning board signature block, is the, is the notation. Second paragraph.
Right. Questions?
Can you confirm, this is in which district?
In which zoning?
Yes, CS. CS. What's the, I don't, I didn't check.
150.
I, I trust you, so it's 150?
Script commercials, script commercials, 30,000 square feet, 150 feet of frontage.
So this is, these lots meet, which you stated.
In the, in the zoning data, just for future reference, is on, is on the plan, on the, under the plan purpose, and that last paragraph indicates a zoning district in the frontages and what have you. Setbacks and whatnot, just the zoning data.
Zoning, see, there, thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
Typically, we'll do that on all the plans, put that data on there to
Makes it easier to find.
Helps with the questions that might come up.
Yep, I was looking in the application. Often, it's in the application or in the letter, but it wasn't there.
So Lot A in its new configuration stays under the ownership of the current owner?
Um, until it's conveyed, yes. I think it's planned to be conveyed to, to P.
So the, the Thomas Michael Design Center, which is sitting on their property now, will then be sitting on the applicant's property?
No, Map A Lot A will remain Thomas Michael, and they'll convey, they'll convey
Just the parcel.
Just the parcel.
Okay, all right, that's
That's my understanding, at least, as to what is intended to take place.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any questions. Sam? Mr. Schultz?
My questions were answered.
Sherry?
No questions.
Mr. Baptiste?
I'm all set.
I, I heard you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice there.
Well.
Just hesitating because of easement across to parcel B from 3125. If it's going across the front, it's gonna be pretty tight across.
It'll be extremely tight. That, there's already no room between the front of that building and Route 28.
Which building we're talking about?
Thomas Michael.
31, no, 3125.
The, the, the drawing is deceptive in how much room there is between the front of the building and Route 28. And if there's a, an easement that runs across the front of it, like what is shown.
I mean, I know that that's not what is in front of us right at the moment, but I understand that's the purpose of this step is to get to that.
I wonder if it, wow, I don't, it's probably not, it'd make more sense that the easement be at the back property line where there's a whole lot more room.
Yeah, except that there's
It shouldn't be an issue as to the endorsement of the plan.
Actually, that easement, that easement doesn't have anything to do with this plan and the access is, that's the easement, temporary construction easement for Route 28.
For the construction.
Yeah.
Yeah. Aye.
Otherwise, it would be very narrow, easement across the front of the property.
Would be extremely narrow, yes.
Entertain a motion, Mike?
I would entertain a motion. To endorse.
Well, Peter, don't make me say his last name because he'll probably throw something at me.
Flores? Are you making a motion?
Yes, I am.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Motion to approve by Mr. Baptiste, a second by Mr. Corbett. Vote to approve. Sherry Clark?
Aye.
Mike Baptiste?
Aye.
Jane Gleason?
Aye.
Sam Corbett?
Aye.
Kyle Schultz?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Chair of zero.
Chairman?
Sure.
This, this correction, I like Sherry, but she can't vote on
Oh, we keep doing that.
Before the planning board, unless it's a site plan.
Yes, right, okay.
I don't wanna say nothing, Charlie, I'm too close to the issue.
So 5-0-0. Okay. Are, are you here for 16-22 as well?
I think I'm here, yes, I am.
I thought you just liked that company, you weren't gonna leave.
That too.
Good answer. Okay, so moving on to application 16-22 738 County Road A and R. Sherry, you will not be able to vote on this.
I do not take it personally.
Applicant Robert Kristofolsky Jr.?
Yes.
Map 98 lot 1037A. Okay, floor is yours.
Um, we're taking this parcel and map 98 lot 1037B and creating another buildable parcel of, of land on this lot. It's on County Road. It shows the minimum required area. And also the zoning circle, building setback lines and what have you. It's in the
Which doesn't make any difference.
MR 30 zoning district requires 30,000 square.
Okay. Back live, Bill.
Perfect. Forget where we dropped off.
I think we were discussing the confusion over the frontage on the town lines.
Yeah. Um, our, our lot has required frontage in Wareham and what have you, and we just modified that plan, I guess, at the suggestion of the, the planning board. And just change that five-foot dimension on the front. See that little angle point in the line that separates B from, B from C?
Mm-hmm.
At County Road, there's this angle point that's 20.99 feet in length. That was the five feet that that line was shifted to the south.
I don't remember discussing that.
This, if I remember correctly, this was previously submitted as 1322, which we denied because of these questions. At 6:13, and no one, no one was here to even have this discussion, I don't think.
No, no, he did mention that no one was here.
Yeah, so we, we, we just denied it, and this is exactly what we had hoped would happen. Somebody would come back and
And explain.
Explain it, and then, I think, I don't know if Ken wants to weigh in. If you remember, Ken and Charlie had a long advisory discussion about whether it was a material issue or not. So I think Charlie didn't think it was an issue. I think Ken thought it was an issue. So my question, Mr. Buckland, you believe this adjustment addresses your concern?
Yes, I think it does. I talked with Brian Grady from GAF's office. And he had offered that he would provide the frontage that made it conforming in in the adjacent town as well as the town of Wareham. So I think it addresses both the cases of frontage requirements and a multi-jurisdictional area.
Was that, was that the, the reason for the shift was to, to conform with Rochester's frontage requirements?
That's the reason for the shift. The land is in Wareham, completely needs to comply with Wareham rules and regulations, in my opinion. But we did make that adjustment to comply with Rochester. Rochester measures their frontage at the 50-foot setback line. They don't measure it at the street line like you do in Wareham. But in any event, 225 is shown on, on on the, the other lot in Wareham.
So, Mr. Man, my, my only understanding, and I'll defer to you and Charlie, but it was because the driveway access on the other lot crossed the town line, that was what was causing the confusion.
Yeah, it's, it's
That was what
That, that's fine. If this resolves it, you know, I don't need, I don't wish to debate it or at all, it's fine the way
I was just explaining what the area of confusion was.
We understand.
It's not a, it's not an issue either way.
Yep.
Because the only, the only question you have, does it have frontage? And does it meet one of the three criteria under, under an approval-not-required plan?
Yeah.
It's either a way, it's a public way, or it's a way that the town clerk satisfies, or it's a way that you showed on the subdivision plan, or it's a way that has adequate width and grade. Those are the only criteria you really need to go by.
Right.
I feel it was okay either way, if they, I don't think it makes any difference whether it's in Rochester or not.
Yep.
It's a public way. The property is all in Wareham. I don't think you're free to endorse it.
Yeah, I would have to agree. Is there any other questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to endorse project 16-22 738 County Road A and R.
No move. Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste for a vote. Sherry Clark? Oh, no, you can't vote. I, I want you to vote so bad. Mike Baptiste. Jane Gleason?
Aye.
Sam Corbett?
Aye.
Al Schultz?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, 5-0-0. Cool.
I guess so.
Okay.
Did anybody sign it?
I believe so. I think it started at that end of the word, this one. Oh yeah, better get back, Sherry. Should put you down. You want this one? Okay, moving on. Continued public carings, 12-2291 and 101 Faring Hill Road Site Plan Review. Applicant has submitted a writ request to continue this until July 7, 2022.
I move that 122291101 Faring Hill Road Site Plan Review be continued to July 7, 2022.
We have a motion to continue until July 7, 2022. We have a second, motion by Kyle Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett for a vote. Sherry?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And chair votes aye, 6-0-0 to continue.
Thanks so much.
We're gonna do it at 6:00 PM on the 7th, right?
Yes.
Do you want me to modify my motion, 6:00 PM on?
No, I just wanted to be sure I knew so I could be here, because I gotta be out of town.
We could make it first on the agenda, so you can
No, I mean, I'll be out of town during the day.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to be sure I could get back.
I think that's the only thing we're gonna discuss that night. That's an off-cycle meeting.
Yes.
Thursday.
Strictly that, okay. Other business, 39-2159 Main Street, modification of site plan. Applicant QOBZLLC. You're here for this too?
Here for this too.
You're a busy man tonight.
Um, do you folks care for some half sizes? I have half size if you'd like.
I like the big stuff myself, but thank you.
Look at Sherry, she's gonna smack me.
Be careful. Sure.
Is that different than, how is it?
Say, I have a second.
It's just ever so slightly bigger.
62322. Same, same ones. Oh, there's one right here. Long with it.
The applicant, Bill Madden from GAF Engineering, here on behalf of Warren QOZBLC. This is the project that was previously approved at 59 Main Street down at the old Greer Lumber site. And there's been a couple of changes proposed, and as part of the conditions of approval, any, any plan changes that are proposed need to be presented to the planning board first for your evaluation. See whether they're minor, minor changes, or whether they're more significant and require additional action by the planning board. So we, you know, these plans do involve a few, a few changes, and I can go over them in briefly with you folks and go from there. The first plan change is on sheet number one, and basically, we just revised the, the building coverage. The building coverage on the, on the lot did increase to some degree. And we just noted that in the notes on the, on the plan. The second sheet required us to revise the drainage operation and maintenance schedule. That's due in part to the, to the plan change we made relative to stormwater, relative to stormwater. Recall, we had a situation on on the site. We had a small, we had breaks in the, in the curb, and we had an infiltration trench that was parallel to parts of this area. We
What page you on?
I'm on sheet number three, sorry, I'm on sheet number four here on the layout plan. And sheet number six is actually the grading, grading and drainage plan that speaks to the changes that I'm
You need a microphone?
Sorry. That speaks to the changes that I was talking about relative to stormwater management. But in any event, we eliminated the the river stone infiltration trench. We had a trench that effectively functioned as, as a pre-treatment device to our underground infiltration chambers. And due to a couple of reasons, we've changed that. Now, we, we show that as a trench drain that we're going to use to capture the water from, from the parking lot. So we'll have a continuous trench drain only interrupted by the handicap accessible walkway to a pavilion walkway. And, you know, essentially, that runs the entire length of the parking lot. Everything drains in this manner. We picked up in that trench drain, and then it'll be discharged into a, a deep sump manhole, so that it provides the same function as a, as a deep sump catch basin. So we provide pre-treatment before we go into our underground infiltration beds that are gonna be on each side of the pavilion building, where is, where the the marina office and some toilet rooms are to be located. So that's one of the changes that was made drainage-wise. So consequently, the operation maintenance plan on sheet number two was modified to incorporate that trench drain and that deep sump manhole in the maintenance that's associated with that. So that was the second that was the second comment as far as it changed to the plan goes. On sheet number three, we modified we modified. On sheet number three is the existing conditions plan. We just indicated where the meter pit, there's an existing meter pit on the site that has a two-inch service that comes from Main Street. In discussions with Andy Cunningham and the Water Department, he prefer us to utilize the existing service connections that are on the site and make our water distribution accordingly from there, from there. So there's a two-inch service here and we just show that. There's a meter pit as well located on, on the property. So we're gonna use, we just show that on the existing conditions plan as we go into sheet number four. Where it'll talk about what we're, what we're gonna do there with the, with the water. I could cheat for really five. It is on sheet five, but I'll go to sheet four first because of the way the layout is. We removed the twelve hundred square foot building, a twenty by twenty patio and park, I'm sorry, and sidewalks. We replaced it with this eight by forty Conex box. So the Conex box is going to be configured with a couple of roll-up doors. It's gonna be one of those outdoor, one of those more trendy outdoor types of facilities that you see popping up around South Coast in the Cape quite often. So they're gonna serve food or whatever it might be out of, out of that Conex box is gonna be fitted to, to provide some type of, some level of food service. So as you might recall, we had a thirty by fifty building that was going to be a retail, a retail in a commercial space. We show that as dotted because in the future, I think that there may be a desire to, to build that structure out. Whether it's built out in the same manner that was originally proposed, I'm not certain. But we know that the footprint that was approved would fit there. And we aligned it and, and structured it in a manner that allowed our underground infiltration bed to remain regardless of what structure ultimately ends up in that location. So we show the dotted line is showing the bigger building and the shaded structure is the Conex box. And that Conex box will be placed on a, on a concrete slab. It'll be provided with elec, with electric service, water, sewer and, and gas or propane if, if gas is not extended to it. We removed a twenty-six by forty-four pavilion and we replaced it with the a twenty-six by sixty marina office and pavilion structure. So there's a two-story structure here that's shown in that, in that box, a smaller box. And then there's a pavilion just to the, to the south of that. So the, the two-story box will, will have some toilet rooms in the lower level that will service the marina. We'll also have on the second floor an office for marina operations. And it'll also provide access to a, to a second story deck. There'll be a patio below that. So that's a substitution from the pavilion that was originally proposed. The pavilion was, was simply that. It was a concrete pad with a roof structure over it. It was intended at the time, that was intended, I think, just to service, service as a, a si- sitting gathering area for people at the marina or people that just would visit, visit the complex. So that has changed to a more detailed structure. And the other pages that I gave you from ASAP Engineering, some elevations in there that show what that building would look like, elevations and floor plan, I believe, is with that. Over here, there was a, there was a request to change the dumpster location. You might recall originally dumpster location was at the rear of the property. And now there was a, a request to, to locate the dumpster enclosure, the concrete dumpster pad and enclosures down closer to Main Street and closer to the, to the British Landing building itself. And as part of creating that, we had to modify the, the landscape feature that was proposed on this southern side. It's twenty-foot landscape buffer that dumpster pad will be in the buffer. So we're gonna need to trim back on the berm. We had a berm there that was planted. We had some fencing that was going to complement the planting along that berm. So now that has been modified at that location. Also, when I consulted with the fire department, they were a little concerned about the access into the site and egress from the site. So this island that's located on the west side of the building at the south end of the site. He Captain Smith wanted us to depress the curb flush with the ground so it's defined at least as the curb line. And then he would, wanted that landscape feature to be drivable and mountable by fire apparatus. So he suggested that we place scored, scored concrete at that location. So we'd have basically ridged concrete that will infill between each side of the curbing. And it'll be flush with the grade, same elevation as the parking lot so that the fire apparatus could mount that in the event it needed to and drive out into drive out into, into Main Street. So that's another one of the changes that was proposed down here at that southeast corner of the site. On the back of the building, on the back of the building, there's a small four by ten balcony extension that was extended out that overlooks the river. On the south end of the building, the stairs that go from the, from that loading area that we had. Now it's, it's loaded from both the east and the west, comes up to the, to the higher elevation, so the, actually the the dining room level floor, which is, I don't know, what was elevation seventeen, it's elevation eight or so down at, at grade there. So, so that's a, a change that was made in the I'm sorry, I was just reading notes. So that was, that was changed, a little bit has changed in the front. The, we've removed the walkway that we had and now they're proposing a paved pavers, concrete pavers or bluestone paper walkway as opposed to concrete or wood decking. So that shows across the front. And if you look at the elevations that were provided by by ASAP, you can see that the, the funk elevation of the building has changed from what it, what it previously, what it was previously gonna look like. Footprint remains the same, square footage remains the same. The architectural element of the front elevation side and rear elevation has, has changed as, as the floor plan. But for all intents and purposes, the footprint remained at sixty-five hundred square feet. On sheet number five, we modified we modified the grease trap configuration from the Conex box. If there was food service going on in there, there'd be a requirement for pot washing, some utensil washing, what have you. So we would be required to put a, put a grease trap in there for that. So we relocated it. We always had a grease trap for the original building, but we just wanted to indicate how it has been reconfigured on the, on the site. The river stone trench was replaced with that that trench drain that I previously spoke about in the, the landscape berm adjacent to British Landing was also changed as well. On sheet number seven, the landscape area it changed. We tried to, we, we followed the same theme that was originally proposed where we have dense vegetation where on the, on the south side on a berm, screening the operations end of the restaurant from the, from British Landing. And the screening across the front, not the screening, but the landscaping across the front on the north side remains pretty much what it was. We're maintaining grass areas along the, the William Riverside of things and probably would expect maybe even some other future landscape to, to, to take place down there. More in keeping with coastal type of landscape features. I think those tall grasses kind of filled the bill pretty well in those areas. I'm pretty sure that that's what, what these are. We did not do yet if we did the landscape plan, we did do the landscape plan in this particular instance. But we had the plant material selected by Ed Fuller. Ed Fuller's a landscape architect who, who did, did most of that work for us. On sheet number eight, we revised notes and eleven, nine through eleven were just modifications of the details to accommodate the construction that's, that's presently proposed. So those are the, the changes that are that we're presenting to the planning board tonight and we're interested to see what your thoughts are on, on all of these. That's pretty much what I have. Have to entertain the questions you might have with respect to those changes.
Who would like to start?
Is it a minor or major change?
Well, that's what we have to, I have questions. You have questions before me? Okay. Through you, can I address that? Thank you, Mr. Madden. I have just some questions so I can understand before we make the determination. I'm sorry, I'm not particularly familiar with a COVEX structure. Is that a, a shipping container with?
It's like, it's a shipping container.
That's, that's what I was inferring, but I didn't wanna. So the look and feel will be substantially different than the ice cream shop model that was originally proposed. Is that a fair conclusion?
Yep.
Okay, so it will impact the look and feel of that end of the site?
Yes.
Okay.
And it will, it will have, it will be modified or will be modified. I'm sorry, this is Danny Warren. He's the owner of the project. It will, it's not gonna be the storage container.
I understand it's, it's going to, yep. That I, I just wanted to make sure I was visualizing the right, the right concept.
Yeah, Dan.
You gotta, you gotta talk to the thing. Thank you. Sorry, I'm late, by the way. You, you, you helped me visualize. Thank you. That answered my question. My next question is regardless of whether we approve this as a major or minor modification. The, and this is just a procedural question. So you're still showing the outline of the original building in that space. Would that, would you have to come back again when you have a more revised plan for that, for that section? Or would this approval grant you the ability to do whatever you want in that space?
I think ideally we'd like to not have to come back, but
I don't know if that's ideally or not, but depending on what you were gonna do.
From our standpoint, if we didn't have to, that would be beneficial to us, but understanding that the building that was proposed was a little different than what it was. I, I would think that that had already been previously approved. But we're seeking to, to modify that. I don't know how it can be conditioned to allow, to allow us to go back to, to pick and choose to do this one in the interim, then at the, at the end of the day, go back to what was originally proposed.
So this is a procedure just helping me. Mr. Buckland, what would be the process for that? Would, would this approval allow them to move forward with the, with any design on that pad? Or would that be another modification to the site plan?
You could condition the approval of the phasing of this so that you would get either approve the, the, the future phase or, or have a review of the future phase and okay, approve it as part of the process.
Okay, so I understand the process now. So as I think about what we do, I'll keep that in mind. My next question, and, and it may be on here. Originally, the pavilion did not have toilet facilities. I didn't see septic on here. Is it on here somewhere? A new septic plan in?
It's municipal sewer here on this site.
But does that, how does the moratorium impact that? This was not envisioned before the moratorium went in place.
I believe that prior to us filing with the planning board, I submitted a letter to, to Guy Campina Sewer Department asking for sewer flow for the site.
The entire site?
I, I think that we focused it, you know, I, I outlined what it was. I don't have that with me, but I, but I don't, I don't know if it was exclusive to just the restaurant or included the, included everything. I wanna say it included everything.
Can, can we?
There was no, there was, there was flow associated with the ice cream store and the commercial building. Not necessarily flow associated with the pavilion because there were no
Right, there was nothing. So but now you're gonna have flow from each of the buildings.
Yes.
So I just, my question is, how does the moratorium in, impact that change, this change?
I, I think that we, we may be able to obtain a permit for the flow that we requested originally. Like, I don't know how he would evaluate additional flow, but I know that guy does like to be consistent. So whatever his whatever he does to be consistent with other applicants and other people in town, I think is what he's gonna do. So, you know, I think that we, I think that we covered our base with our original, our original project. And I'd like to think that we have enough flow associated with this project to, to meet that, but I would have to look at that.
Yeah, okay. So that's another thing I probably like confirmation of, but.
I, I'm sorry. I talked to Guy about this and he says we definitely covered.
That doesn't matter. I need it.
Yeah, what I need to be writing.
Thank you, though. I, I'm, it should be simple to get the letter then, that, that would be. My next question is a procedural question. Thank you for the explanation about what the, the cap, the fire captain asked about the, the island. My question is, is we had a letter from the fire department on the previous plan and I wanna know, just wondering procedurally why this came up after the site plan was reviewed and approved? Because we had a letter from the fire department signed, signed off for the previous plan. Mr. Buckland, you know what changed as to why the, the captain changed his, his position? Or made a new requirement?
It could have been because he saw changes in the plan that are being proposed now.
Oh, so he reevaluated the, the conditions based on the new plan? Okay. I just, I, I wanna make sure we did have the, I, like, I know we had something from the fire department for the previous plan. So I was surprised to hear that he's asking you to make changes. Just a, again, another, another question because I haven't researched it. When you, when you're incurred and you're doing the dumpster incursion into the berm, does that affect the setback requirement from British Landing or you're still, you still have adequate setbacks from the back of the?
I actually think the dumpster pad is, is in the side yard setback.
Okay, so that would, try, try, that would be a, we just should confirm that when we review this plan, right?
Yeah, you'd have to confirm that to be sure it's not a violation as only.
Right.
Yeah.
So that would be in your report for this, this plan? Or depending on what we decide, depending on what we decide to do.
I guess it depends on how you vote, whether it's a major or a minor change.
Okay, so I, I think we need an answer, just confirming that it's within the setback.
Well, based on, on the plans, it looks like it is.
I, I can't.
The setback.
It, it does, but I, I, I don't wanna rely on my trying to read this itty, itty bitty. So just, just a con- confirmation of that. My last question, oh, Mr. Madden's looking out.
I was just looking to see what it said. It says ten, it's a ten-foot side yard setback. Looks like it's right up to the, to the, it's a twenty-foot landscape buffer and a ten-yard, ten-foot side yard setback. So it looks like the back of it is right up to the setback line.
Ten foot, I thought it was a twenty-foot setback in this region.
It's, it's ten in the village district.
Okay, oh, you're right. This is in the village district. I'll, I'll confirm that, but thank you.
It's on the, the, the It's on the, the, the data is on.
Yeah, I know. You told me it's on the sheet. I'll go find it. And then the last question, and this may be, uh, for you or Charlie. You, you've made, you, you explained the changes you're making in the storm water incursion. Technical term, whatever, the, the.
Stormwater management?
Yeah. Does it require an update to the stormwater management plan is what I was going to ask.
No, we, we're not adding, we, no, we're, we're not adding any impervious area.
So it, these changes, Charlie, you don't think they would trigger a need?
Oh, I want an opportunity to take a look at. I have some questions.
Okay, so you'll get your question. Okay, so I think the last question I have is going back to the previous pavilion. Clearly, the marina office will be enclosed. Will there still be clear sight lines through the rest of the pavilion? Or were you putting, I couldn't remember. I think I read somewhere there was going to be walls on the pavilion. That's what I, I don't, I, I can't. I tried to read this before I got here today, but it's not. You have a picture of that, Mr. Warren?
Yes, we do. So only, so the, the block, the view block will only be on the the marina office. This will be your main office.
Use the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, guys.
Correct.
This, this section. That'll be closed off. That's where the showers and stuff are going to be. So there won't be clear sight. Right. Now, if, if I may, just explain this to you a bit before I come to this thought pattern. The other building that I still intend to build, that was going to take a huge piece of that building up. So then my son said, Dad, why don't we put it into this and make, lose some of that? So there's more space over there and out of the building. So that's the plan and the, this unit here is totally portable for the two hour notice. That's gone. So it's, it's going to serve a purpose for a while, but it's already been enough places gone. And I can explain to you why later.
Thank you very much. That, that, those answer my questions, uh, for chairman. Thank you, Mr. Warren and Mr. Madden.
Jerry, do you have? Jerry, do you have questions?
I don't have any questions. I find myself curious about what, uh, what Charlie and Ken think about this.
We'll get to you next. Mr. Baptiste?
Let's see a picture of the Conex ice cream top.
Need to get a copy of that and some exhibit.
Yeah, it should have been included with this, with the elevations.
We have the elevation. If you want it.
Yeah, it would have been nice if the Conex building was included though.
Yeah.
Because as Bill was starting to describe the Conex, of course, I'm Googling Conex buildings and all I'm finding is shipping containers with windows cut in.
Just, just so you know, the historic people love it. They said when I'm part of it, they know where they want to go with it. The, the design, the final design on the big building is in there also, Mike, if you want to see it.
I think everybody's seen it. Ms. Gleason?
I think most of the questions that I had.
Carl stole your thunder. He does that a lot. I'm going to start putting him at the end. Charlie, I love you to weigh in.
Okay. I just have a question of Jane. Uh, look at the elevations of the building you just been discussing. Is it typical to show? When it says exterior elevation east. I guess you're looking east, but isn't it a west elevation? You tell me from the architect's point of view, are they labeled correctly?
That's the east side of the building, so that's. The east elevation.
If I look, if I look here, based on the
That's facing the water.
Location of the north arrow, it's the west side. Just curious about the labeling of it. They just seem backwards to me.
Of the main building?
No. The one you were just discussing. The one that has the, uh, the one that has the marina office in it.
It's the last page.
Other words, I would call the top one a west view. But it's labeled east, it's.
Yeah, the bottom one should be east. The top one should be west. They are backwards.
Okay, thank you. Um, with respect to the, the questions I had on the drainage, just looking at sheet eight on your plans, you can see the contours that are all going from Main Street in a northeasterly direction toward what Bill has described as a trench drain. I would like a, an opportunity to, to review that because I'm concerned about the total TSS removal, which is total suspended solids. A trench drain typically is very shallow. Potential buildup of sediment in there could possibly plug it up. If there was a modification to that by raising a curb line across that walkway and raising it up six inches, the curb line would act as a gutter. And you could travel along that gutter to a catch basin in the corner of that island. That picks up a good portion of the runoff. You could do the same thing further down. And just carry those together, it would give you the opportunity to put in some water quality units as well. And get rid of a 24 inch diameter, uh, four foot deep basin, which won't trap much sediment at all. So I'd like the opportunity to discuss that with Bill and see if we can modify that. I'm really not too excited about that trench drain because I think it's going to be a, a maintenance issue. Besides that, you've got parking areas, parking stalls that are right up against that. So if a curb was put there, it would serve two purposes. It would control the runoff and it would also give you a stop for wheels. So I'd like the opportunity to check that out, make sure that uh, the appropriate amount of TSS, total suspended solids removal is taken care of here. And, and get an idea of what that trench drain would look like because I think perhaps there's a better way of looking at it. Let me say a different way, not necessarily a better way. Excuse me, Bill.
If I could just add, there is a curb, um, on the, on that parking lot. So there is a curb up to that, to the sidewalk pavers and the trench.
Okay, alright, so. So you could really eliminate the trench drain and put a, put a basin right in the corner.
Well, the problem with the basin is, is that we don't have the, when we put the pipe in to leave the catch basin, we don't have the height to, uh, to, to get to our, um, to our infiltration. The groundwater is so high, it takes away a lot of the volume that we have and where this is redevelopment and riverfront area, where we're able to, um, to, to modify things or to do things to the maximum practicable degree.
You're going to have a small pipe coming out of that trench drain.
We have six inch.
About that big. So why couldn't she use the same sort of pipe coming out of a catch basin?
Um, because the, the grate has got to be about eight inches in thickness in the grate. Then there's the top of the catch basin. That's about six inches in height. So the top of the pipe is 14 inches below grade just to start with. And then, then we have to get into the structure. So we really start to compress the, uh, the space that we have to put our pipes in. So we, so we are, we are piping, we have a sump in the bottom of that trench drain. Our pipe is coming out high in the drain. We realize it is a, it is going to be a maintenance, um, issue, but um, we don't think that that's terribly problematic due to the fact that it's going to be this, it's going to be seasonal and year round facility and it's going to be managed year round. So we're required under stormwater management at least to maintain those structures and we think we have that covered in our operation maintenance plan. And that's why we put that four foot sump there because it, it's at least a four foot sump to accommodate any sediment which may get carried over from the trench drain. It will drop into that sump and then it will come out into our infiltration basin. So we thought that given the constraint of the depth of the trench drain of the piping that we have in there, that by putting that sump, it gave us at least another source of, um, storage for sediment. Sometimes we'll use it, we'll, we'll use a deep sump manhole. Not, you don't use them often, but you put a sump in your manhole, just like you do a catch basin and it performs the identical function. So that's what our thought process was there.
I, I think I'd still like to take a look at it. Was the marina office a part of the original plan?
No.
No, there was no office.
Alright, so the question that came into my head was how many spaces are going to be necessary to utilize the marina plant or the marina office? There will be one or two spaces that would be dedicated to that use?
It would be at least one, I think.
So that would be in a, one or two less spaces that could be used possibly by the restaurant. I think that's all I've, I've got right now. I don't see any, there weren't any changes in the stormwater infiltration system, right, Bill?
No.
Alright, I just would like to have a chance to look at that as Bill has described it. So if you decide that, uh, it's a made a mod, major modification, then obviously I'll take a look. If you decide that it's not, then I don't know as much point might be involved in it.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Um, I had one quick question that where the main, uh, building has been redesigned. Uh, and I'm looking at the height elevation of 52 feet plus. How does that compare to the original building?
The original building? The original building I thought was at 45 and I think this one's at like 38.
So when your elevations, it says top of monitor ridge is 52 feet seven.
We're starting at 17 feet and the building's 28 feet tall. And I don't think the monitor counts, at least whilst it didn't in Carver. Pupillars and monitors aren't considered the height. They're a decorative thing.
A part of, uh, at least in my mind, part of our original approval of this project was line of sight.
The, the residents commented on that.
Right, and now we're dealing with the building. That's another, if the 45 feet is accurate for the original, I'd have to go back.
This building is much shorter than the original building.
Well, you just told me it was 45 feet. This says 52.
It's 17 feet at floor level, ground level, 28 feet up from there. So 17 and 28.
And then why does the elevation say 52 feet?
I have no idea.
It's probably above sea level.
What's that?
Probably above sea level.
Yeah, we'd need to compare that to the original.
Those, those are, those are in elevation, that is elevation. That's not like Jane was suggesting it is elevation. It's not 52 vertical feet.
It's not a dimension from, from the ground. The elevation above sea level. So the ground is at 17 feet.
Well, the first floor, the floor.
First floor is at 17 feet.
Of the restaurant is 17. The grade at the patio out back and the steps is, is about at elevation eight, I think. Says top of basement slab. The basement slab is 8.2, I think.
Yeah, I, I would like to.
And it's in the AE 15 flood zone. So the, the BF, base flood elevation is elevation 15, the design flood elevation, which the floor of the first floor of the building has to be is the base flood plus, plus two feet. So that's 17. And then I think what Danny was saying is the building is 28 feet in height from that. So if you add elevation 17, add 28 to that, I think that's how we get our building height.
But isn't, isn't the building height measured from the average grade to the, to the top of the structure? So, so long, so long as from the average grade around the building to the maximum peak of the, of the building, that can't be more than what the zoning allows, which is what, 45 feet in that zone?
40 feet in this zone.
40 or 45, I forget.
It's 40 in here, but I think that that's the physical height of the structure in, I think, I think we're getting confused, not confused, but there's a difference between the physical height of the structure and the elevation.
Oh, oh, no question about that, but the zoning says it can only be so many feet high above the average grade around it.
And it's the average grade around it. And I took those average grades and we calculated out those average grades and I gave that them, to them going back some time ago. And the average height, the average grade around the building, I think we're at elevation 12 on the south side, elevation eight on the, on the, uh, pavilion side. And I want to say that I had an average grade was like 9.75.
I just, I averaged about nine feet from what I see.
Yeah, we're the same ballpark.
So if you go from nine, elevation nine, you can go 40 or 45 feet above.
49.
49 feet total. Yeah.
And we're at 52.
Well, if those are elevations, 52 does not reference 49 feet necessarily. Just be careful about what you're reading on the plan, that's all.
Well, I'm a layman.
Okay.
I see 52 feet.
If it, if it is 52 at the top, um, elevation 52, and it's only 40, the average grade would have to be 12. Which it isn't. So you might have to take a look at it.
Say, I was looking for the original elevations. None of the original paperwork is, is on, online. So it's just new stuff.
Yeah, I have to go back and pull mine. So it'd be nice to see a comparison of what's changed.
They said, I just.
Visually.
Right, visually, the height of the building caught my eye because when we approved the first one, we spent a lot of time with line of sight and impact on the neighbors across the street and what they're looking at across the street.
And with that building height, the way the zoning bylaw is written, it says pursuant to CMR 780, which is a building code. So you need to go back into the building code and figure out what they're talking about to, to determine those heights. So we're not, it's not as simple as just looking at as our, um,
This is the original?
At our zoning bylaw.
Those on this hit elevation.
Talking about laterally six feet.
Yeah, and it only talks about the maximum height, doesn't tell you how to measure it. And that's when you have to go back to the code.
But there's something wrong because I took a whole floor off that building.
I'm not saying it's necessarily wrong.
Did the wrong, this time it was wrong last time. How can it be eight, nine feet shorter than it was before?
I don't know. I'm, I'm sure Bill can ferret that out.
Yeah, I don't think that.
It doesn't have elevation.
But the original plan?
Yeah.
Um, the, we didn't, we didn't note those on our plans. They were always noted on the, on the renderings. The renders in, that, that were provided as part of the package.
No comment. Ken, do you want to weigh in before we move forward?
Sure, just add my two cents to this as well, might as well. In any kind of development project, there are changes that happen along the way. And, uh, the, the problem is the more significant the number of changes, the more expensive it gets as the project goes along. But, uh, it, uh, it's been modified significantly and there is the necessity for a, a review of the, uh, the contents of the, of the revised plan. But, uh, I understand from, uh, Mr. Warren that, uh, time is of the essence on, um, is being able to, uh, advance the project. And, uh, he may want to, uh, suggest that, uh, there are reasons why it shouldn't be a major modification and go through the more extensive review process.
Thank you.
Is this a, oh, this isn't a public hearing, no, no.
No, it's not. That's a, if it's a major modification, it has to go through a public hearing.
And we'd have to go through the public hearing process again. Dan, do you want to say anything before we put this to a vote for the board?
Do I want to say anything? If, if it has to go back to a public hearing, I will, with absolute total respect, everyone in this room, withdraw the project tonight completely. And put the product, the property up for sale immediately. And I'll tell you why. I'm not. And I'll tell you why, I'm not, I'm not trying to sound like a spoiled kid. The time to order the building is going to take twelve weeks. I lost the first builder and the builder, the building went from six hundred thousand to a million three. That's what's happened, the windows went from eighty thousand to two hundred and twelve, the roof went from a hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and four. So, and I should have brought it and showed you, I've got four more days to buy the building. If I don't buy the building, then I go back in the queue and it'll take me fifteen to twenty weeks to get it. So at that point, I gotta cut.
I, I think my, my comment, and it's strictly non prejudicial, so please don't take offense to any of it. Um, when you were here before us the last time, uh, we reviewed the project, we knew there was a time constraint, we really, you know, hammered down and, and got it approved for you. And like, what, two weeks later, three weeks later, we got a rendition at one, at, at the next meeting of a completely different idea as far as the ice cream shop and the center pavilion.
But there was a reason for that though.
Well, I understand, but let me finish my thought, that was several months ago. What has taken so long to get us to tonight where we're, we're again under a time crunch?
It wasn't from lack of trying and pushing, we got two different engineers working on the project and the world's upside down, I'm not going to cry play the Kobe card, but, and we're not going to do that, but it's just, it's not been from lack of trying and lack of pushing to try to get it done. And I, and there's absolutely nobody more frustrated than me. Well over a hundred thousand dollars out in engineering costs between everybody from Bill's company to two more than nearing companies and design guys, and there's absolutely nothing to show for it. So that's, that's the, that's just the hard truth about it.
Anybody else have comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I would suggest that maybe we set up a, a a partnership here uh, with the uh, uh, Mr. Warren as a developer. And uh, uh, work through the changes as they come up uh, with a uh, a work, a task order work plan, so to speak, uh, that addresses each of the concerns as they uh, are identified, as he changes the, the project. Such as uh, Charlie doing the uh, the drainage review with Bill Madden. Uh, as one of the items on this uh, project change, as well as say uh, Jane maybe on the um, uh, architectural review and the analysis of the, and the height and the change in that elevation as well.
Well, I mean, that, that all sounds great, but based on what Mr. Warren's telling us, he's got four days to order a building, so it's going to be pretty tough to address any changes to that building once it's ordered, I mean, that, that ship sailed at that point.
Is there, is there a way to view it in, in, like, in parts, the sixty, we're talking about the sixty-five hundred square foot building with, with getting that thing?
Ordered, he needs to, he needs to, you need to place the order for that building.
Okay, but I mean, so, so.
We can't change anything about that building four days from now, once he places his order.
Understood, but can we, can we view it from the standpoint that the site plan review with respect to the sixty-five hundred square foot building might not constitute any significant site plan change and the site plans that we're really talking about modifying or associated with the the pavilion building and with the Conex box? So I mean, is there a way to separate? What's that?
And the drainage.
Well, the drain, the drainage doesn't really, there's a modification to the drains, that is, that is a site, that is a site issue, but we haven't added any impervious area, we haven't increased the, the volume and the rate of runoff. Um, there might be a couple of things that we, we look at as far as implementing that drainage system, but for all intensive purposes, the parking lot doesn't change, the landscape doesn't change, there's a couple of things adjacent to British landing that changes and the elevation of the building, but the other two pieces, I don't know if there's a way to I mean, how, can, can we separate that out that the building, the main building can still move forward? And then if something did rise to the level of substantial change, can it be associated with the Conex box structure and the Marina structure and separate itself from the, from the main restaurant building?
So at that point, you're, you're, you're kind of walking back your statement about not having to come back to us for approval concerning the Conex box turning into an ice cream store.
Let's do this, I got an idea. Pull the, pull the ice cream Conex box off it completely. No, let me explain why, there's a reason for saying that, I'm trying to buy that parking lot from Toby and that's why I'm trying to reserve cash for that. And eventually I want to build the other box, so I don't care if I build it now or if I build it later, I'm going to build the other building. So if I go forward, so if, if that Conex box is a, is a game changer, if it's a log jam for you guys, take it off.
Well, it's not so much the box itself, but Bill made the statement that if we make, if we consider it a, a minor modification and you go forward, that he doesn't want to have to come back to us, because it says right on the plans that you, you, you're planning on removing the Conex box and building something on the original footprint. But now he's saying that we're going to take that and shove it off to the side and address it at a later point and just focus on the main building right now.
And that's fine with me too. I just, I just got to make some decision, if it makes sense in the next couple of days.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question of Bill?
Absolutely.
Bill, what's the size of the, of the restaurant now as opposed to what it was in the other plan?
Same size.
Same size?
Yeah.
So there's no change to that?
No change in the footprint of it, with the exception of the balcony and the stairs that, that I went over.
So essentially, there's no significant modification to that building, other than checking on the height to be sure that you're not above the maximum allowed height under the zoning bylaw.
Right, the four corners of that building are the same four corners that we originally submitted on.
Okay. Now, I would agree that any drainage issues that have, have been changed or what adjustments they made are minor in, in uh, scope, because they do not change the overall scheme of drainage on the site plan. It would seem to me that the smaller building that we're talking about that has a Marina office in it, it's up to Mr. Warren, but he could just put that aside right now and just deal with the main building if he's up against it to, to purchase the main building, I assume that's your first priority to get that built.
To get it ordered. The building's coming out of Montana.
Yeah, so, so your, your concern is that building, so if you were to simply remove everything else from the table right now and leave the special permit as it is for everything else right now, he could come back at a later date to put that Conex building in and, and make the changes to that without affecting and, and doing what he's trying to do to get a building for his restaurant. So I think if you did separate it out and just dealt with the changes he wants to do on the restaurant, that you could deal with that, and if there's anything else later on, it's of a minor issue. But that's just a, you need to deal with the height to be sure that that's not an issue, because if you approve that height and then you got to come back or you're not going to have to go to the Board of Appeals to get a variance, you don't want that.
No.
So that's the only issue and I would suggest you get your head together before the meeting's over and figure it out so that the board can say tonight and then you're home free one way or the other. Figure out what the height is and then you'll be able to deal with it.
So a question from Mr. Rowley and Mr. Mann, so what you're proposing though, we don't have plans in front of us to approve that match your um, suggestion, we have plans that are the entire um, project, so if we said this is a minor modification or a major, it would have all the details that you're saying, let's not consider the pavilion and how do we get to the point where if we followed your recommendation that we're just approving part of it?
All you have to do is state it. Irrespective of what shows on this plan tonight, you can say this modification that we're dealing with, even though there are other details that are different than the first one, we're ignoring those. And we're simply going to deal with the issue of the big building, the restaurant. And if he comes back at a later date with the same plan, now he's going to build the, whatever it is, the.
Pavilion, the Marina office.
Yeah, the metal shed with, with the Marina, you can deal with it at that time. But simply say, this site plan, although it shows a different footprint for the, it's no longer an ice cream shop, it's something else, we're going to ignore that, we're only going to deal with the restaurant. I, I don't think you're doing anything that wouldn't make logical sense.
So we can segregate out everything except the main building and say, based on the changes to the main building.
For now, the old second building stays as it was. The fact that it shows a different building here, just ignore it and deal simply with the restaurant building.
And what about drainage, then we're ignoring the drainage?
I'm saying, I'm suggesting to you that it does not substantially change the overall drainage patterns on the site and as Bill has suggested, this is a remediation project, which means they have some latitude with respect to dealing with all of the guidelines and regulations.
My question is, how do we enumerate all the things that are in and are out?
Just deal with the restaurant building and simply state we're not dealing with anything else.
Then you just said we're dealing with drainage.
Then talk about it and say it's a minor.
I want to get it right, that's what I'm trying to do.
Alright, then, then say along with the building, we will consider the drainage a minor modification issue with no public hearing.
So everything discussed shy of the new pavilion slash Marina office and the Conex box, everything outside of those two buildings, drainage, parking.
The dumpster, moving the dumpster.
Dumpster moving, everything else we consider and.
You could consider, you consider those as a minor modification and it may be that if they are able to establish the actual total building height and give it to you tonight, maybe you can say that's a minor modification too. But you, you got to know.
I, I don't think you have to know the building height to approve it, you can go, go on the basis of the, of the architect's drawings that they've uh, submitted that they say they're in conformance with zoning and that uh, you're relying on the professional judgment of the, of the architect in that regard.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would not just arbitrarily accept that without doing a little checking and there's some question that we've discussed tonight. I'm not saying the architect's wrong, I'm not saying he's right, I think it needs to be verified so that you know what you're voting on.
Can't, can't it just be stated that the building height shall not exceed that required by zoning?
Anybody got a zoning book, I forgot to bring mine.
The zoning book says that it's done on the basis of an average grade around the building is measured uh, by the building code, which means it's six feet off of the building uh, wall, outside building wall. And it's measured to the highest structural member of the building.
Yeah. The height is based on the distance of the average ground elevation to the highest structural member of the roof of the building.
Which district are we in, Bill?
What's that?
Which district are we in?
WV one.
One.
WV one.
That's what it says on your drawings.
Maximum height.
Forty feet.
Forty feet.
Forty feet.
So you got to verify that from the average grade around the building to the top of the building is no more than forty feet.
Is that what he's doing now?
I think, I mean, I know that I think, I'm pretty certain that, you know, when I figured out what that average grade was, I nine point seven five, elevation nine point seven five stands out in my mind and that puts the top of the building, if it's forty, forty feet, at forty-nine point seven five. If those plans are showing something higher than forty-nine point seven five, then.
Fifty-two seven.
It's got to come down. Either way, the maximum height as it's defined in the bylaw cannot be more than forty feet.
Above average grade.
Correct, so, so even if we gave, gave you uh, the benefit of the doubt, we lowered average grade to nine feet, it's still too high.
I wouldn't, I would simply state that it cannot be more than forty feet. Because that's what the zoning bylaw says, based on average grade. So if they have to adjust the architectures in the meantime to meet the forty feet, then they just have to do it.
The zoning bylaw does state to the highest point on the structure.
Right.
Which I think is.
Which is that clear story, which is above the main roof line.
Which is not necessarily how the building code calculates uh, building height, but that's what the zoning, those are the words in the zoning by law.
I mean, the ridge, that I'm, that I'm reading up this, the, the top of the ridge of the main building is forty-five, six and a half.
Right, but it says highest point on the structure, so the whole building, I think is what this is, that would be my interpretation.
The highest structural member, I think is what it says, right?
That's right.
The highest point on the structure.
But that doesn't exclude cupulas and, and lanterns?
This doesn't go so far as to say that, I know that in the building code in, in seven eighty CMR and the uh, the I, the IBC, that's what they talk about, particularly when they're talking about doing uh, measurements for height and area limitations and for sprinkler and all that. Yes, but that's, I have to say, I don't think that that's how I read this.
No, you're making me happy because I conceded, put it back for the historical commission, this cost me another seventy thousand dollars. So if I can take that off, it's fine with me, because they kept arguing that cupulas and those things weren't a part of the deal. So I, I don't care if it's on there or off there.
Yeah, this is, this, in my interpretation of this the black and white words on this page is that it goes to the very top of the whole building, including all bits and pieces.
So, so to make that height requirement, people have to go, you wouldn't have any problems with that law.
None whatsoever, Mike, it's, it's a, it's a huge expense just to make somebody else happy on another board. So, does it fit, yes, does it look like your mountain, yes, that's why I agreed with it the other night to go ahead and do it. But if it's, if it's in black and white, it's you're the bad guy, not me.
But I mean, that's that monitor that you're talking about, right, that?
Yeah.
That, is that, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I mean, if we're saying that the mean grade is at, what were you saying?
I said nine seventy-five.
Feet, so and the, the ridge is at forty-five, six and a half, so there you go.
So you still, you still have some room to play with.
Right, yeah.
Another feature you might want to put on the, on the roof of that building can still fit in there.
Right, you could put some, some other less pronounced feature. Yeah, if that's what you need.
Lower cupula.
Yeah.
With just, with just a nice weather vane.
Uh huh.
Yeah, my, that's how my son first drew it, but he did one drawing with a real copy of the nail company and that's what, and I get it, I fell in love with it too. In conservation, I mean conservation, historic really, really wanted it and they asked me again the other night to to hold and keep it, so I, I said I would.
I mean, if you look at that the south exterior elevation.
Right, it looks pretty substantial.
It's almost seven feet.
Right.
Yeah, it is substantial, so, so.
You could shrink that down a little bit and still have the, have the effect. So that's why I say if you can, if you insist on it being a maximum height from the average grade of forty feet, they can adjust that
Yep.
to meet that.
Yep.
And you won't have to worry about what the plan says.
Drop it from seven foot to three foot or four foot and you're there, you're only off by a few feet.
Well, and if you drop it that way, I'm going to start designing it again.
Alright, well, as, as long as, I, I want to make sure we word this correctly, so we focus on the main building, on the parking, on the drainage, your, your opinion is that the drainage does not change substantially to warrant any.
No, it, it doesn't impact the drainage in any significant way.
Right, the, the footprint, as Mr. Warren said, that the four corners are in the exact same spot, nothing's changed. We separate the Conex box and the uh, Marina office uh, structure and, and focus strictly on this and take a vote on this as to whether or not it's a minor or a major modification with the understanding that anything that happens past that point would be.
Yeah, and if you want to consider those other things as a major modification, you could, but.
In a separate.
Yeah, you're doing it separate, you're not worrying about it tonight and it gives Dan an opportunity to
To get the building.
Put his order in for the building he really wants to get started with.
Alright.
And if we focus on this, just the structure, we can bring our infrastructure, utilities up to the, up to the, to the location where, of where those buildings are to be located while we're building. Where of where those buildings are to be located while we're building the parking lot and doing the other things, just not building the structures.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I think I just did. We're looking for a motion to vote on. Minor modification based on the main building on.
Could I say just one other thing? And I appreciate everything you guys have said. But when we changed that other building. Here's here's where that thinking came from. We were trying to get for. Oh, it was a conservation, a lady in there kept saying, geez, Danny, you need more, some kind of a varied use of the property. So we're going to try to get two small shops in there and that bathrooms and stuff for them, Marina. Well, the way the building was designed, wound up with these three chopped up little things and nobody could do anything. So my son come back, and I should have got my son involved way back and I didn't. Uh, my son come and said, Dad, why don't we simply turn it to thirty by fifty? It won't be as big, but it'll be further back away from the water. Put put this piece of the pavilion, let that be the bathrooms, we've accomplished all these things. And now you can have two nice shops instead of do two two nothing shops. So that's where that thinking came from.
Mm hmm.
So then we were ten feet further back away from the water, which made conservation real happy. And it made me real happy because you want to be enjoying the water, not the not the parking lot. So that's where that thinking came from.
Well, it's good thinking. I just, like I said, I just want to be clear from our side of the fence that when these two buildings are addressed. There's going to have to be some discussions in order to move this forward.
Right.
Did I hear a motion?
That's my motion.
That's okay, so we have. We have a motion from Mike Baptiste, a second from Sam Corbett. The motion is to. Vote to consider this a minor modification based on the main structure only. Take that to a vote.
Could I ask you to include the fact that it would not be more than forty feet from average grade?
And that the building height meets zoning requirements, which is no more than forty feet from the average grade.
Yep.
Sherry?
Hi.
Michael? Jane?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Al?
Based on the fact that I feel pressured to be making a decision. With incomplete information, uh, I'm concerned about wording of your motion and and being able to enforce it. Um, all of these changes are being made. Um, on an approved site plan that. We're being pressured to make a decision. This is the second time I feel we're being pressured to make a decision. I'm going to vote no.
Could I make one more suggestion?
Uh, no, I I think we're in the middle of a vote, Dan. Yeah.
You have the vote, Dan. Don't mess it up.
Yeah. They, even based on Kyle's input, I I I have to agree that I don't like. I don't like being pushed into a corner with with, you know, a stopwatch running when we make these decisions. Um, and and moving, as we're moving forward with this planning board. We are going to put an end to that. There there will be no more of these last minute decision making. Process processes. Uh, but I also don't want to see this project go by the wayside. Uh, because I think it's important for for Main Street. Like we said in the very beginning, I think it's a, it's a good thing to get Main Street. Kicked off and it's that revitalizing the downtown area. So that being said, I'm also going to vote to approve.
Thanks.
So we have, what, five, one, zero? To to consider it a minor. Five, one, zero, consider it a minor modification. Well, we want to see it built till.
I want to be able to believe it.
But I I I, you know, I I do agree with Kyle. I I hate being jammed into a corner to make decisions like this.
For Carl, I can tell you, anything I say I do, I will do and we will.
Not in any way reflecting on your integrity.
Well, I I know that. You don't know me from Adam though.
Okay, and you're right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for your time. Much appreciated.
Good night.
I I know we're gonna, we're gonna. Mired in the muck on the zoning bylaw article, so with the board's approval, I'd like to take. Wayham Retail Management, Master Mill Works out of out of order, kind of blast through those. Um, it's my understanding that there is somebody online for Wayham Retail Management. Is that correct?
It should be Jordan Chapman, I believe. Ah, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Uh, yes, we can. Thank you for attending.
Thank you for having me.
So I I I'm sure you've probably received the letter from. Zoning enforcement concerning our concerns at the property. And I'm looking forward to hearing your plans to to correct what we've noted in that letter.
Yeah, so again, I guess my name is Jordan Chapman with Wayham Retail Management. We're located at three zero two zero zero Telegraph Road, Suite two oh five in Bangham Farms, Michigan. Um, we've been aware, or this issue is, you know, brought to my attention a little while ago. And we've been working with our general contractor and the the waste management company to to come up with the resolution. And I I think that we've, we've come up with something that that would work and resolve the issue. Um, and would require, I guess, some minor site modifications. And I think that's, you know, what we would like to to present to you guys and get your feedback on, you know, coming to the resolution. For these trash containers.
There were more than just the trash.
It was more than that's the trash. There was some concern about stormwater management and and some ponding over. Over by the the exit where the Chipotle is located.
And some erosion and.
Have have you. Addressed that or have plans to address that?
I I need to get with my my civil engineer, Doug, you know, over at High Point, but. I I believe we're on the works on resolving that as well, but I I know one of the. The major tasks, I guess I was given was for the the trash enclosure.
Um, Charlie, do you want to weigh in on this? I think most of.
Yeah, there's multiple things out there that I put into my letter back in December. Um, that have not been addressed at all. Uh, it was at a request so that you could get a C O C for Chipotlis, but it seems that they've been ignored. Um, recently I was out there and the drainage basin that's between the access to Cranberry Highway. And Chipotle's has eroded, exposing some of the sprinkler pipe. One of the sprinkling pipes is broken. Back in December, I noted that the transformer pad that's near Starbucks has got an opening under it. So the water can get underneath. It hasn't been addressed. Um, I did deal with the dumpsters and I talked with your engineer about it. And at one point, they said they were working on a plan. And the former chairman of the board asked me to contact him again and find out what his timeframe was. And all of a sudden, the telephone went dead and I haven't heard a thing since. Um, there is stone edging that needs to be brought up level in the parking lot. Uh, it's below grade so that when you drive there with the car, you can drop off the edge of the paving into the stone. That needs addressing. Um, the temporary service that was there, that's gone, so that's not a big deal. There was a little cleanup that still needed to be done. And that's it. Other than the, other than the. The landscaping, which appears to be in pretty good shape, I didn't notice anything that was in need of replacement. But without the sprinkler, I don't know how much water is actually getting to the plants. So they've got some repair work that needs to be done and it hasn't been addressed. The bottom of the drainage area now has a lot of sand in it, needs to be cleaned out. And the other drainage areas should be cleaned out a little bit and made a little bit more presentable. So it's just more than just the dumpsters at Starbucks.
Thank you, Charlie. Yeah, based on on Charlie's comments and and such. Um, you know, here we are in June, his letter went out in December. So six months seems like an exorbitant time to to address what seems to be just some minor details considering the overall project. So um, we we'd be looking for a a plan of action from from Wayham Retail Management. No later than. What would be reasonable time? Plan of action no later than thirty days and actual conditions corrected, no less than sixty days or no more than sixty days.
Sixty max.
Yeah.
The growing season will be in and soon, any threats as they make.
So I would.
Going to go through another season, another winter.
So I uh, I I think I would entertain a motion from the board to. Um, request from Wayham Retail Management. A written plan of action on how you plan on addressing the concerns listed in Charlie's letter. And then execute and complete no later than sixty days from tonight.
Well, there was one other thing I forgot, and that was a more recent item. That the the roadway that leads out to Cranberry Highway has been flooded in two instances. And I think the reason for the flooding is that when Wayham Retail did their construction, they put some filter fabric under the catch basins in that road. And I took a picture of it and I think I sent it to you the last time I. Um, made comment on it. If they simply remove the filter fabric, I think there won't be any flooding issues. But nobody's addressed it and they've been out of the site for six months.
Right, well.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have been in contact with Walmart, also I think an engineering company that handles. The the catch basins and they notified me last Thursday that someone would be. Going out and that they would rectify the situation immediately. Um, just F Y I.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. Um, but then again, that's that's good that you've taken action on that, but. Uh, as Charlie's letter has stated, um, you know, there are several concerns that need addressing. So again, I would, I would suggest that we have your plan of action. Uh, in writing in the planning office, no later than thirty days from today. And the execution of the corrections no later than sixty days from today.
So moved.
Seconds, we have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Mike Baptiste. Uh, Sherry?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Chair votes, I, six, zero, zero. So we'll be looking forward to that letter with your plan of action and. Um, hopefully start to see some of the corrections made soon.
Understood. Uh, is there any way that I can request that Charlie sends the the letter that was last issued to my direct email? I know I've been going back and forth with Monique. I just want to make sure I have everything and I can come up with a formidable uh, plan of action.
I just need an email to send it to.
Yep, it'll be Jordan, J O R D A N. At Alrig, A L R I G, U S A dot com.
I'm happy to forward it to you, Charlie.
Thank you, Monique.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye.
Uh, Mr. Chair, one more, uh, Charlie, if you could just send that letter to the board again, so we.
Um, I.
Know we had it from back then.
Yeah, but you've also, I've resent it within the last ten days.
Yeah.
Oh, then I'll look.
You should have it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know I have a copy of it.
We've got it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, master mill work review for compliance, Charlie?
I was out there on the twenty seventh and I did give you a a report on that. And I did get an email today from Hanan. Massey, had a good meeting with him, by the way, on Friday. Uh, was not contentious at all. It wasn't the same individual that I dealt with when we were dealing with the parking. Um, but anyway, he listed four things which he's going to do. Uh, landscaping will oversee hydro seating completed next week. Lomen seed the area between the building and the fire road that's out back of the building and had nothing on it. Uh, grading of the slope in the northeast corner that was sort of left in a rough shape. There were two, I see nothing on this email, but I know that it, he knows about it. There were two trees out front near the old entrance that were leaning over. They needed just to be pulled back and staked so that they're they're straight up and down. And the stockade fence, which was called for on your site plan, had not been installed and he said he was going to order the fence today and get it in. So he said, I'll follow up with pictures as the work is complete. So, um. That's all I had and I did put in my letter, if you happen to see it. That I'm making no statements with respect to compliance with the approved site plan for any of the paving.
Correct.
The, we still don't, we still don't have the results of the core testing. That's.
I think.
By the wayside.
Um, that ship sailed.
Yeah, there were some trenches.
Right.
There were trenches and there was one other thing that, oh, there was two or three spots in the old binder. Uh, there was nothing but alligator cracks because it's indicative of a soft base. That happened when they put the binder down. There was no um, request from me to come out and inspect the base. To see if it was clean before they put the top on or anything. So I have no idea how thick the top is. What the what the condition of the base ended up as or anything. So in my letter, I I'm making no call to the planning board saying that it is in compliance. These are the things, they're visible from the surface, you can see it.
Yep.
And I'm sure he'll take care of it.
Okay. Yeah, it seems like he's he's eager to to work and getting all of this done. I think he's he's got.
Yeah.
What, two more weeks?
That, I was going to ask that. What is the date that this extension expires?
It was thirty days from our last.
From the thirteenth.
Uh, I thought it was thirty days from the night.
You met on the thirteenth.
Oh, that was the second, you met on the night also, and we met again on.
Yeah, but your planning board meeting was the thirteenth.
When we gave.
Two weeks ago.
Extension.
And you gave him a thirty day extension at that meeting.
Right. So he's got basically two weeks, a little tick over to work with.
Reason I remember it is because I put it in my notebook. We had several things on the agenda and I wrote them down that night and it was master mill works.
You know, I did meet on the thirteenth, I was looking at the minutes.
Um, so, okay. So, well, I mean, he's, he was with us the night that we gave him the extension and I thought we made ourselves pretty clear that there'll be.
That was his understanding at the time.
No further extensions. That that was the one and only that was going to be granted.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I did ask him if he had any correspondence to the effect that the extension was granted and he said he didn't.
He received nothing from.
Right.
Um.
So I think it would be appropriate just to acknowledge that, make sure that he understands it. I know he does understand it because he and I talked with it on last Friday.
Right.
But he's got nothing in writing.
Nothing from the town.
Right.
So that that extension correspondence, should that have come from the building commissioner?
No, it come, no, you're the one who grants the extension, so I would think it would come from your office.
Okay, Monique, can we look into sending him an official letter stating the end date of that extension?
Sure, absolutely.
And and I will confirm that that the minutes we didn't approve tonight did state on the thirteenth.
That we gave him thirty days.
Thirty days.
Okay.
Ultimately, the board voted to extend the C O by thirty days due to supply chain issues, but requested the site visit, which. Uh, be done.
Which Charlie's completed. Okay. Thank you, Charlie.
Welcome.
All right.
So we have an action, Monique is going to send.
She's going to send.
Certify certify that so that it's.
Right, so he's got something in writing that he actually has an extension and that it does have an end date.
Let's say specifically thirty days.
In the minutes, yes.
Yep. Okay. Al, Jane, you guys are driving the bus on this. Which one of these you want to start with? Because we're not going to get through them all tonight.
Um, well. My first question would be, has everyone had the opportunity to kind of read the enormous amount of documentation? Um, and then I have some question, I have some questions for the planning office. So regarding, so I'm answering your question. So regarding.
So, uh, regarding, so I'm answering your question. So regarding the subdivision control rules and regs, uh, I worked on that. I just need to compare the last version that I had with what Monique sent out to make sure that, because there were, there were a lot, did you, have you looked at that? Yeah, you haven't. Charlie was working on.
I, I sent Monique the other day, the last copy that we had that we worked on with Aaron. And we had jotted some things down in, in pencil on that, on that working copy.
All right. So I just need to, I'm satisfied that then Charlie sent her the last one. Just need to review and make sure that's the last one. Then the board needs to be happy with that and we need, that one we have to hold a public hearing on.
Yeah, but I, before you do, I think you want to at least discuss it amongst yourselves.
Yeah, so that's what I said. We have to.
Okay, so, so the, the, the long, the long version is, is you want to start with subdivision rules and regs?
I, I'm not sure that we're ready, until everybody's read it.
And thoroughly understands.
And thoroughly understands it, we can, we can have it, so we can ask questions. So I was just summarizing. The other thing, the same comment, I worked on article fifteen. Um, and I just need to go back and make sure that the version that was distributed was the last version that I had with all my notes on it, that with the updates, I, I'm assuming you worked with one that Richard left behind. Um, so I just wanted the, the opportunity to confirm, um, that that had all the latest, um, uh, updates, revisions, and since that time, uh, in discussions with the planning office, there may be a couple of other revisions, uh, that we might want to make to clarify things, uh, regarding, and it may have to be updated in a couple of places, uh, what version of stormwater management, uh, plans, uh, as we've had several citizens uh, comment on, um, are we using the latest version of stormwater data? I think we need to clarify in a couple of places, um, that what data should be used in those uh, calculations. So I think that's something the planning or the board can review. Because that, those were not changes we had made to that draft. The other change, and I have to see if it's in fifteen, we've had, uh, applicants questioning, um, the definition of setbacks within and abutting, uh, zones, and I think we should, uh, where possible, clarify the intent, I think of the citizens in this bylaw is within a residential district, not just. Yeah, so we, in fairness to, to all applicants, we need to be clear on how we're going to interpret it. I don't think that changes how we have to interpret, um, that's, but I think we could be more clear on article fifteen. And I have one more question and then I'll let, you can let Jane comment. I have a question on the stormwater management plan. That was a draft from Walpole. Um, certainly that, in that wording, it's not ready for us to act on. Um, so I'm not sure what the, the intent is for us to begin taking that as a model and updating it.
Hello, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Why don't I run through the, why don't I run through the list here and, uh, give you an overview of what we're, what we put, uh, forward tonight, so you can get an idea of where you want to pick your battles. Uh, as, uh, as Carl said, the stormwater overlay is a model bylaw. Uh, what we're up against is, uh, the EPA's, uh, MS four, uh, regulations that are requiring the town to do, uh, certain things regarding, uh, stormwater management and, um, uh, regulations that, uh, uh, are going to be required, uh, for the town to adopt. Uh, in which case, if we don't, we may be subject to, uh, uh, enforcement orders and even fines from the EPA for, uh, not advancing the MS four program. Um, we've already had some, uh, uh, overview by EPA. Uh, they came down and did a a, a, a survey of our, uh, our program the way it is right now. So that's, there, there's some risk involved in that and, uh, purpose of showing a model bylaws is to show what is in, intended and, and the content that the EPA is looking for. The density and dimensional regulations, um, uh, this is one that, uh, uh, has a lot of, uh, uh, Scrivener's errors that, uh, uh, over time, uh, as the tables have changed, uh, they have, uh, haven't always been able to, uh, be clear. They've actually confused it in some cases where the, the changes have been made and haven't, uh, been consistent throughout the tables. The, uh, article eight is the, uh, lip program. Uh, this is the confusing bylaw that's in the books right now. Uh, and, uh, the purpose for this is to, uh, try to straighten that out so that they actually could be used. Article fourteen is, uh, uh, the administration, it's essentially a, um, uh, a permit guide for somebody to look at the, uh, who isn't familiar with the boards and commissions and, uh, the, uh, the people involved in building permits and, uh, zoning compliance and what's necessary for, uh, getting, uh, a permit. So it's, uh, it's, it's like a permit guide as well as, uh, uh, some of the criteria for, uh, some of the decisions that are made. Article fifteen, site plan review is, uh, that draft has, uh, I think advanced quite a bit. It was, uh, just about ready to go to, uh, public hearing. There's also another component to it though, and that's the rules and regulations that go along with the site plan review, special permit. Uh, the, the rules and regulations are, are something that, uh, can be adopted for any special permit that, uh, specifies some of the procedural and, um, uh, things like fees, uh, whatever, uh, uh, regulations that would apply to the, uh, applications that come forward in a site plan review. So that, that, there's, there's two, uh, two hearings, one for the, the articles that would go to town meeting and one for the rules and regulations that would just like the subdivision rules and regulations that would be, uh, heard and adopted by the planning board at the, at the time that they feel, uh, that is appropriate to advance the, um, the rules and regulations as they are. The subdivision rules and regulations, I think, are another one that's, that had a lot of work done on them and they were advanced quite a ways. What they need is some graphics though, to identify the, the, the different, uh, dimensions and uh, construction standards for the four different types of, of roadways that are identified in the, um, in the, the rules and regulations. Uh, that could include, uh, graphics for, uh, some of the details as well too, is for some of the, the, the elements of the infrastructure that, uh, the town looks for and, 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 uh, requires in the in the construction of the roads and the utilities that go along with those roads, the subdivision roads. So those are the ones that are listed here. Uh, are there any questions you have, Monique?
I have, I have a couple. Uh, Ken, um, that stormwater overlay bylaw, um, that's going to impact the subdivision rules and regulations as well as the zoning bylaw. I can't help but think that we must be in compliance with some of that. Because, um, they like low impact development. They like, um, things that go along with the stormwater management program that DEP put together and we've abided by in the last few years. Do you have some idea as to what portions of the current bylaws are in compliance and what we might have to modify, rather than simply going to a, a model bylaw that's completely um, some, from some other source? Because if we do that, you're going to have to completely rework both the zoning bylaw and the subdivision rules and regulations to comply with it. That's going to be a momentous job.
We're going to have to modify the rules and regulations and the zoning bylaws at some point anyway, to address the key issues. Uh, there are some, um, elements of the, of the bylaw that are, uh, I think most important right now. And that's, uh, uh, got to do with some of the nutrient loading standards and some of the procedural, uh, requirements for reporting on, um, uh, stormwater, um, um, uh, management system, uh, design and, uh, and management of stormwater systems. Uh, those could be, uh, we could, we could, uh, uh, cut this down to something more, more specific. We've already gotten some, uh, regulations in place. Uh, we passed those back in, uh, the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, I believe, one, one of those town meetings where we, uh, had, uh, uh, stormwater and illicit discharge bylaw that was, uh, passed. So we've, we've addressed a lot of the issues. Uh, you're right, we can, uh, focus this a little bit more, but we'd still be changing the subdivision rules and regulations as well as the.
I understand all that, but there's no, there's no basis for making a decision. So doesn't the board needs to see what those bylaws were that you passed back in two thousand nineteen and twenty? To see whether or not you need to make other adjustments?
Well, hopefully they've, they've seen them as well too, because they've been on the books, but, uh, we can go over them as well.
Are they in the zoning bylaw?
They're in the general bylaws.
The general bylaws. Well, that doesn't help us in zoning and it doesn't help us in terms of subdivision control. So how do we, how do we link these all together? Because you can't work one without the other. They've got to be compatible. Is, is there any way to put a handle on some of the details that you're aware of and, and list them out so that they could be compared to what we already have? So we don't have to reinvent the wheel?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, and I think the model bylaws just shows the, the level of, uh, of, uh, range of, uh, of, uh, content that's appropriate or necessary for the bylaw. Uh, what we can do is, uh, take that and, uh, work it down to, uh, uh, the key elements that have to be changed to, uh, accomplish the, 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 uh, the amendments that are necessary for, uh, compliance with EPA standards.
What's that?
This, I mean, this, this, you know, five or six line items that we're discussing, that's an awful lot to enjoy.
Well, from what Ken, from what Mr. Buckland is saying, it, it almost seems like you've got to tackle that stormwater overlay thing to figure out what's there. And then, and then come back to the subdivision and, and site plan review and zoning, because it's all linked to that. If, if the EPA says they have to be certain standards, and I can't imagine that some of what we already have is compliant. The reason I know a little bit about is I went through this with the town of Mashpee two years ago. And they hired a consultant to come in and review the MS four requirements and look over both the bylaws and they said, okay, you've got this, you've got this, you've got this, you've got to update the language here and there, and within six months it was done. But right now you're looking at it blind. You, you don't have anything and we don't have anything to compare. And I'm blind. I, I have no idea what that, that document says and how it compares to what we have.
So that's, that would be our starting point then?
The sooner the better, because.
Uh, the, the point here is that there is, uh, an awful lot of work to do on any of these bylaws. Uh, this one, uh, requires the procedures that, um, uh, a process to, uh, uh, analyze and come up with the, the standards we want to apply to the zoning and, uh, the other regulations. Uh, and, uh, we have to make a decision though about priorities, about, uh, uh, level of effort and, uh, what you can accomplish as a, as a board in the, uh, in the intervening months here.
Well, we need to be hiring this, a consultant. And it, it seems to me, uh, I mean, without, um, having had the chance to review all of this thoroughly, I think, oh, you know, if we were to do it ourselves, I would say we would start with the law and then look at the bylaws that we have and see what in addition may be needed, but, uh, a more skillful way to do that probably is to hire a consultant who can do just as was done in Mashpee on this and look and make, and see where the gaps are.
I would, I would think that if, if each of us can get a copy of that document.
Right.
And then go, go through, I know a little bit about what's in the bylaw. I have to deal with it, so I could look at things and give you a, an idea as to what's going on. Um, but you gotta, you gotta start somewhere. And I have no idea what that information is.
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, just to complete the thought, I have a, um, um, I have a, um, hesitation when it comes to EPA and its enforcement powers about, um, doing anything other than uh, as professional a job as we can manage. Cause it, I think it may not be worth the risk to, to do other than that.
So I can look into, uh, uh, what it would take for a consultant and, uh, a whole of effort and see if we can come up with, uh, the funding for, uh, that purpose.
So to build on, Mr. Chairman, um, if I may comment, I, I don't dispute what, uh, Ms. Quark said at all. And, uh, I'm, I'm glad that Mr. Buckland is going to look into it. My, my thought is at the moment is, um, the stormwater management, uh, piece is new to all of us somewhat today or last week. But my, and, and not understanding what Charlie said is the stormwaters management plan kind of blows through everything. Um, so an assessment needs to be made. I agree to that as well. Um, but I also think that the work that's been done on article six, article eight, article fourteen, article fifteen, and the subdivision rules and regulations are, have been advanced pretty far, notwithstanding any updates that we might need to pull in from the store.
I agree.
So that I think, um, that we all, uh, could take time in understanding where those other items are, um, so that we're ready to move those forward, um, because let's just say that the, the bad news is we can't get stormwater woven through in a consistent way. These other ones are ready to move forward in, in some form without that, without the benefit of that. We shouldn't.
I, I don't think, Carl, I don't think you should, for the very reason that both the zoning bylaw and the subdivision rules and regulations need to be in compliance with whatever that MS four requires. And I understand what you're saying. I was thinking about the subdivision stuff, rather than waiting for everybody to wade through both the existing regulations and the proposals that we drafted. We know what they are. So if they were sitting here tonight, it would take probably a half hour to go through each one of the changes, just by pointing from, we don't need to go through uh, each one of you sitting down for another hour trying to figure out what changes were made. They can be pointed out here, but I don't think that should take place until you've got an idea of what that MS four requirement is. Because it's going to have an impact on, on how you read what we've done already. That would be a waste of time to, to try and do that, I think.
So one, one, just one comment back, uh, Mr. Rowley, I wasn't suggesting that the members of the board review those articles and try and figure out what changed. Rather, I was suggesting they read them to understand what's being proposed and then we certainly could take your approach.
I, I don't think, with all due respect, I don't think that any of you will, because you're going to be bouncing back from page to page to page to page.
Which is what.
We know what changes were made, so we can point them out to you and get through it. That's all I'm trying to say.
It's just a difference of approach.
Yeah.
So the board, we can, we can, um, do what the board feels.
Can we, can we, um, can we schedule an off-cycle meeting to, to address just this? Well, the, uh, the stormwater overlay and how it affects the others and then go through, I mean, if we have one dedicated meeting to nothing but these items, we should be able to get through them, discuss them.
Uh, July eighteenth is the date that, uh, you have available for, um, an off-cycle meeting.
Does it need to be public or can it be a workshop?
It can be a workshop.
But it has to be, uh, uh, open meeting law. It has to be available.
Online, but we don't have to take.
No notice, just the agenda that would need to go out.
Right. And we don't have to take input at that point.
Correct.
Correct.
In the future, we would have to take.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, it, I, I would, I agree, we need to deal with these because uh, like everything else that it seems like we put forth to town meeting, it always ends up being a Chinese fire drill at the one hour. And I, I would really like to avoid that this year. So if we, if we set up that off-cycle, uh, meeting slash workshop, the eighteenth, does that give you enough time, Ken, to get us all a copy of that, uh, MS four document?
Yes, it does.
So we could, we could read the MS four document, each of us on our own time and then go through all. And then go through all of these and how it affects them and see if we can't get through them.
Are you, sorry, Mr. Chair, are you suggesting that the MS four document or just like a shortlist of the changes? Which one are you referring to?
How big is the document?
That's a question for Ken, Mr. Buckland.
It's, it's severely, it's complex and probably needs to be summarized as a way to get through it faster and easier.
All right.
Can you post it on the website and the planning board website?
Yeah, of course.
And that's the place we can see the whole thing and we can pull out the stuff we can see.
But EPA, it doesn't always have a, an easily accessible website.
Well, it's going to be posted somewhere.
Well, your, your summary could be posted. So what I, a question and suggestion, probably to Monique or Ken. At the end of last year, the previous chair had worked to create a section on the planning board website. And if the heading of that section is proposed changes or proposed many, but probably not all of these articles were posted there. We should verify that what we're looking at is posted in that section of the website. Can you see it, Monique? It's, it's there. Like I know Article fifteen is there. I don't remember if the subdivision rules and regulations got listed there.
You're saying currently, right now?
Yes.
Okay.
If you go to our page, it's on the left-hand side. It says proposed bylaw amendments. It's got some things that were already probably processed that need to be pulled off.
It says proposed town meeting zoning articles?
Yes. That, some of them are there. We should, my, my proposal is, is by before the eighteenth, we get that section cleaned up. And then filled in with all of the things we're being asked to look at, including any summary that Mr. Buckland might be able to prepare on MS four. And then that's, that's our working area for this, for this.
Just, just put it someplace where I can read it.
That's what I'm saying. It's there. I'm just saying, we're just going to get it up.
And just to, so, so I can be clear. I think at the end of this, at some point, we need an environmental lawyer to tell us that what we do is in compliance with the law.
That was a separate thing that.
Yes. And otherwise I think we're, we're at risk or putting the town at risk.
I was just trying to get these documents.
I, I understand and I, I support you.
Some of them had a lot of work done on the roof, like fifteen. Well, that, most of these have had a lot of work done. But now that we've got this new input, we have to weave all that.
Yeah.
The bylaws, the other bylaws and regulations can refer to other sections of the regulations where we concentrate stormwater management requirements.
What's that?
What are you saying, Ken? I don't understand.
That we don't, that we don't have to repeat the, the stormwater management requirements in each regulation or bylaw or article of the zoning bylaws. We can put it into one place, such as an overlay district in the, in the, the zoning bylaws and refer to that section in, in the other regulations and bylaws.
It may be, but we still want to know what it says. I wouldn't want to just make a reference.
Sorry, I didn't say that you weren't going to know what it says. When we know what it says and have it in place, then we'll refer to it in the other sections and it'll be, we won't have to repeat it that way, which is probably a better way to do it since you won't have a, you won't have the possibility of, of not repeating it correctly or making changes in one place and not making it in the other.
Okay. So, so the plan is to get the MS four document up onto the site where we can all read it. And then do an off-cycle meeting for the eighteenth, if that is available for everybody.
On the eighteenth?
Yes.
What time on the eighteenth? Yeah, what time?
Well, with this no public input, I mean, we can start it whenever. Yeah.
Something unusual.
Like something unusual?
Yeah.
Like six o'clock?
Yeah.
Six o'clock it is. And this, can this room is available that night?
I've actually reserved it already. Yep.
Oh, you have?
So I have a question. Do we think that we can get through this in time for fall town meeting? Sounds like it's a huge undertaking.
You could, you don't need to take the subdivision rules and regs to town meeting. That's one thing. So you can set that aside. You can hold a public hearing on it. Once you've decided on the changes are right, you'd advertise it. And you hold a public hearing and as soon as your public hearing is over and you vote on it, they are the law. So you don't have to worry about town meeting for those. So I think the most critical thing is to get the stormwater management put to bed. So that everybody knows what's going to happen and then see how much tweaking you're going to have to do to both the subdivision rules and regs as well as the zoning bylaw. If, I don't have any problem with putting in a separate section in the zoning bylaw, but if you do that, you're going to have to modify perhaps other sections. You'd have to go through each section. Be sure you haven't got conflicting interests like there have been. And take those all out. So the minute that you say we're adopting a new zoning Article sixteen, it's going to be stormwater. That you at the same vote, say, we vote also to delete any stormwater reference. It's an Article one through fifteen. Because it's all going to go into sixteen. So there's got to be some checking of what's in that document in order for that to take place. I have no problem with it being separate. If it saves a little bit of work and not having to adjust every article, I don't think it will anyway. It only affects, affects basically site plan review, maybe some parking, maybe some landscaping. But other than that, it doesn't affect building height or dimensions or anything to do with lot size or that type of thing. So.
Well, so where I was going with that question was, do we want to attack Article Six tonight? It's pretty mechanical.
Do we know what it is?
I, I think that's a good idea. I like that one because this is more of a corrections of, of errors in the, in the bylaw that exists right now.
The original and the, what I was proposing, and I can walk you through the whole thing.
That makes sense.
So, there we go.
Where is it, Jane?
So that it should be in the packet that you got, actually in that. Is it in here?
I'm going to take a, a, a quick break for two or three minutes.
Okay.
We just blowed.
Make sure she gets it back. She'll, she'll hunt you down.
I'll send a bell to the town.
Hi.
Oh, this is different. Okay. Monique, did you put the bylaw in?
So it was in the package that got sent out to everybody.
Right. It was the first packet that got sent out.
This, yeah. So it's two parts. It's these two.
Yes.
That was, and if you have both of them side by each, that helps. Are we having a break? What's that? Um, yeah, why don't you?
Okey dokey, we're back. Jane, sorry, yes.
So, start at page one. Again, this was, I was looking at this with a, an eye to, not to the substance of it, but to just the language and the graphics and the whole layout of it, the organization of it. So the only thing I saw in here was a sentence that made no sense to me. Or it didn't seem that it was saying what the intent was. It says, note that area requirements differ from development on municipal sewer and septic systems. So I just, I'm in section six twenty and the last paragraph, the next to last sentence, I guess. So it's just a little bit of a change to the language to say what I think it's intending to say. That there's a difference from this to this, not, there's a difference of this and this. You don't say and, it's a difference. You say difference from this to this. Not a difference from this and this.
You have to revisit the page, huh?
I have that at the back. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just, I was reading because I have other questions.
So.
Okay.
Then on the next page, it was mostly a matter of the language used in this layout. I look at this and I see a bunch of items that are minimum, 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 maximum, 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 what, maximum what? So you have to dig to find what you're really trying to find here. So I just changed the way the words are on the page and it says lot area fronted, front setback, rear side setback, height, building coverage. And then afterwards it puts in minimum or maximum to qualify what we're talking about. That makes sense. This is just based on my trying to use this and I'm, you know, I'm trying to quickly scan this and all I see is minimum, minimum, minimum. I have to dig to find what the real subject is.
Okay. I'm, I'm not questioning. I think you've done a great job.
Be clear.
So one thing that, that this pointed out and, and which I didn't look at when we were doing, section five ninety should be a non-residential use in the R thirty and R sixty districts. And setbacks don't align with what we said in that section of the bylaw, which is fine because that bylaw says whichever is more restrictive. But that's an example of where.
Yeah, we have what Charlie's talking about. We're going to have to come back to this, I'm sure substantively.
Right.
But I'd like to get it in.
I was just noting that, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to get it into a format that's workable and then we can more easily use it, I think. Then you can see highlighted or where it says NR, there are six NR qualifications there. When it's not even allowed, that NR is not, no regulation, NA is not allowed. And in every other category, those six places, it's not allowed. So why is it suddenly not, no regulation when it comes to building coverage? It makes no sense. It should be NA. So I, I don't know whether you would qualify that as substantive. I think it's just a Spravner's error, actually.
I agree. Are we just discussing Mike or do we have to like raise our hand?
No, we're just discussing.
So again, I think that's an important point. And further, I think those changes really impact the ZVA and probably.
Well, if, if it's not even allowed, lot area, it's NA.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, my comment is, they were probably, they use this table for that use far more than we do.
Yeah. But if nothing else is allowed, how do you have building coverage if you can't have building height or side setbacks or?
Yep.
Even the use.
I agree. It's, it's inconsistent at best, confusing.
And then there was in the R thirty column, under building coverage, non-residential use, it has N. What's that? There's, there is no category of N. There's NA, there's NR, there's no N.
Agreed. And then it doesn't talk about, I, I tried to apply this to solar and I, I'm not sure solar isn't building, isn't impervious. Not sure what category it fell under.
Yeah, right. So that would have to be looked at substantively.
I'm, I'm supporting. I'm not questioning.
Yeah, I know, no, I'm, and I'm, I'm just.
I'm looking at section six twenty-one in the old bylaw, R one thirty, for example, where under minimum front back setback, two-family dwelling, it's not allowed use in the R one thirty zone. But it is in the R30 and the MR30, so that's probably the difference between the NA and the NR. In other words, there is no regulation for maximum building coverage because you, it's not applicable in that particular zone.
Yeah, but everywhere, in every other category, under minimum lot area, minimum frontage, front setbacks, side and rear setback, and height, and impervious, maximum impervious surface, it has in R130, R60, and R43, it has NA for two-family dwelling and other residential use.
Right.
Not allowed.
Correct.
So how is it that it turns to no regulation when it gets to maximum building coverage in those same categories?
What would you replace it with, just leave it blank?
I would say NA.
What NA?
Just be consistent.
Yep, okay, I understand where you're coming from.
So, again, thinking of consistency, the table of uses, things that aren't allowed, we should be consistent with how we record things that aren't allowed
Yep.
in the use table on section 320.
Yeah, they need to be cross.
So it's either silent completely, it's not listed, or I think they're listed as NA in that.
And then under MR30, under building coverage, it has nothing listed. Even though, yeah, I mean, maybe it should say NR instead of just being blank.
You think we should have lot area, that's a substantive change.
Yeah.
I think there should be a regulation for lot area coverage.
I would think so too. But when you get down to maximum impervious surface, under other residential use and non-residential use, it's got NR, so no, no regulation.
The building commissioner has to deal with these on a more regular basis than the zoning board of appeals and you may want to have him or her review the, him in this case, review the table as well and make some recommendations.
Yep.
Just by way of explanation, say, under maximum building coverage, the 25% is in there because of the small lots that we've got in so many areas of town. Swiss Beach, Pinehurst Beach, Shangri-La. So when you get small lots, the 25 really is an important number.
Right.
But when you get into the larger zones like the MR30, the R30, where you've got 30,000 square feet, or you've got the R60 or three acres in the R130, you'd never build a house that's 25% of three acres.
Yeah.
That's why there's no regulation in those.
Seems odd to be blank and not say no regulation, because it's spelled out in other places, no regulation.
Yep.
So then on 622, if you look at the original or the existing language, those first, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, nine lines in there, the headers for those are just, in my mind, a mess. There's, it's the hierarchy of how it's laid out is just a train wreck. And because every one of those refers to lot area, but other residential use suddenly is the same significance as lot area. Bed and breakfast is the same significance as lot area. But it's referring to, if I understand it correctly, the lot area of bed and breakfast and the lot area, so I've just cleaned that up, I think. So there's a little bit more clarity to the hierarchy of that outline of categories. And then in the upper part, it refers to bed and breakfast as a category, but it doesn't show up in anywhere, anywhere else in the rest of the outline or the matrix. So you can see I've highlighted it, but I've added bed and breakfast in as a category. And I have not applied numbers to them at all. So that's what all the question marks are. And then the only other thing on here is a stray letter A in the OV1 column, under the first unit for bed and breakfast. I don't know what that A is for.
The only other comment I would make, just for consistency. So, the, some of the headings for your districts, not your districts, for the districts in this section,
Yeah.
don't match the headings in section 320.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was looking at that a bit. I left these two alone. On the next page on commercial districts, there was only, there's only one column on 623. There's only one column of strip commercial, but there are other commercial districts that are referred to. In fact, if you go to two pages later, it's got the, three pages later, it's got commercial general. At 627, which makes no sense. So I made a commercial general, this is the commercial districts, made a new column for commercial general in this matrix.
Which, which column is that?
On the new 623.
Oh, the new one.
New 623, commercial districts, I've added three more columns and commercial general is the second one. And so I've taken that from 627 and then on 627 and the new one, I just refer you to that to 623.
Because I don't see the, I guess CN is the conference district.
Yeah, there's, no, CN was commercial neighborhood. And I
It's not a, in the use table.
It is in the districts, the, it's in it is in the zoning districts. 211.3, commercial districts, strip commercial CS, general commercial CG, neighborhood commercial CN, and planned commercial CP.
So though, again, another inconsistency, they're not in the use table.
Right. So I've put them in here just as placeholders, as much as anything. And I filled in the information from 627 in the commercial general column.
Okay, and I can't find BDOD in the use table.
Yeah, so I think that there might be in the zoning article two, the zoning districts, there might be districts that are that are described in here and called out that are not showing up in the use table.
I'm pointing out more things that
Yeah.
Because theoretically, if I understand it, if there's not a column in the use table,
Yeah.
it doesn't matter what's in your regulation, you can't do anything there at all.
Right. Well, at least now we know that there are these zoning districts in the, in article two.
So it sounds to me like we need to look at article two and article three. And all, see, they're, it's like Charlie said, they all flow through together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you looked at the map at all, Jane? The zoning map?
I did, a bit.
I don't think there's a CN on the map either. I don't think it was ever described.
Yeah. I think it was, it was something that we came up with. I know that was discussed when we were doing the zoning rewrite back 15 years ago. And it was discussed as something that would make sense, because we were looking at the old zoning map and it had strip commercial and it was, it went back 200 feet from the center line of Route 28 and went all the way through town. And so the sort of mantra that we had while we were doing that rewrite was, okay, so imagine in your mind, if that gets built out according to this map, and what does that look like? And so we started to pull apart the commercial zones and start to put in multiple different iterations of a commercial zone that had characteristics that were more consistent with what you see out there, that there are villages and there are nodes and there there are places for big box and there are places for not big box. And they shouldn't be treated the same way in the zoning bylaw.
And which I think makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
But until we, until we get it into the use table, you can't do anything.
I think it was originally in the use table and it got pulled out
Yeah.
sometime in those past 15 years.
Would it have been the type of thing that you would have applied to say a place like Shangri-La that was sort of remote? That is essentially residential, but doesn't have any small commercial uses that are associated with it.
What we were thinking about and thinking that, you know, it makes for a healthy town if you've got walkable, walkable neighborhoods where you can walk to the corner store, pick up a half gallon of milk.
It's things that we used to have, just like Beaton's Market used to be on High Street.
Yeah.
Pizzoli's Market, Tasmanary Store were in West Wareham, right, Mike?
Yes.
So you could shop locally, but then when the big boxes came, everything disappeared.
Yeah, well, you've got to get in a car to go.
But it makes even more sense now with the issues we're having with with gas prices and everything else to take a look at that.
That goes back to the master plan now, saying you should encourage development.
Those too.
I know you have a lot of background.
But I, I think I'd like to see them in here as placeholders, so that we know that that's something that we could have. You know what I mean? That leaving a column is not a bad thing.
Having, having it defined is a good thing.
Yeah.
My only point being is if it doesn't show up in the use table, you can't do anything.
Unless you make a change.
Unless you, without making a change.
Right. Unless you make a change to the map you used to. But I, I having sat on those, both of those committees during master plan and doing zoning rewrite, I like to think that if people are aware, even if you just like give them a little hint, oh, what about this? That they'll go, oh, we should make a change, you know, and more than if there's nothing there and they don't even, they're not even aware of it.
Okay.
So that's mine.
I'm thinking, so a way to address that as an improvement is we could make a note in article three that says, yes, we know there are zoning districts defined
Yeah.
that we're not taking advantage of yet.
Yeah, yeah, which I think would be a great thing to say, because, I mean, maybe I'm, maybe I'm completely an outlier here, but I see this as a living document. This is a dynamic document.
And I would suggest that the solar bylaw committee and specifically, and I think the energy use committee, these things need to evolve as, as
Regularly.
Regularly, for example, as we get cases that come before us where there's confusion over the intent. Well, we have to rule on that case on our best ability.
Yep.
But then, here's an opportunity for clarification.
Right, right.
They, these things need to evolve and be maintained. And I think I hope we can get to the point where town meeting to town meeting, we're making incremental improvements. Not material changes to the bylaw. We're making incremental improvements, continual incremental improvements, which was back in the eighties, the quality mantra, continuous improvement. Who's old enough to remember 1980s, but so I think as a board, if we can adopt in support of your idea, the motion that we should be fostering continuous improvement
Yeah.
in the bylaws.
And we even talked about when we were doing the zoning rewrite, we talked about placeholders. And this is a good example of, like, having neighborhood commercial in there as a possibility.
So, so learning from that, one of the things that we could be doing is if a group of people who write a bylaw with the idea that it's a placeholder, well, 15 years later, somebody needed to note that somewhere, so that the rest of us can figure out what was the intent of this, of this thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
There's some intent. That was what the thinking was back.
Because I, I've been trying to go back where I got a question like that and find out, that's why I told you I was reading the iterate. Okay, what town meeting was this approved at? I want to go read the discussion in the minutes from that town meeting. What were they trying to do? But you can't, you can't find that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, now with, with video coverage, it helps a bit.
Jane, would it, would it make sense to separate those out, the CN and the CP, from those districts that actually exist? For example, instead of, instead of numbering them 1, 2, 3, 4, like what was on page 211, section 211, to put them as potential future districts? Sort of separate them out?
I sort of don't think I would, and the reason I say I wouldn't is because the fact that they're not in use becomes apparent when you look at the use table. And if you decide to put them into use,
You've already got the use table.
It's easier to not have to go back and clean up that this says, oh, well, this is a potential thing.
Okay. All right, I understand.
Just continuing our discussion, I think here, going back to something we asked earlier, if, I don't think no regulation for NR, I think maybe under the table, but we should define what it means when there's no regulation.
Well, I mean, I, I guess I would almost say, why does it say anything? Why not just leave it blank if there's no?
Oh, well, that's fine too. That's another approach.
Yeah, I mean, NR, NA, I mean, that's where I think some of the confusion came from that gave you all these NRs where there's probably should be NAs.
Or blank.
Yeah, I would take out, I would say NA do not allow, but then NR, just make it blank. There's no regulation. Nothing there.
Doesn't that beg the question about whether or not you made a mistake as to whether or not you should have put something there?
Put a hyphen there.
Yeah, you could put a little dash.
Intentionally left blank, this cell intentionally left blank.
Now we're gonna have a paragraph in each spot. Yeah, you could just put a little hyphen, so it's clear that you've typed something in there. It wasn't an error of omission.
But we should try read these things with our future selves in mind. What the heck were they thinking when they?
Yeah, yeah. So.
And none of my comments have, you did a great job. I'm just, it's spotting.
And this was one day, so this, and this was really looking almost exclusively at this article and not delving too far into the rest of the document. And it was mostly because I went to use this document and I couldn't read it.
I've had some similar problems.
Particularly, it was the commercial that I, I just, it made no sense to me. The old one. So. So, looking at 624, I added some items under lot area and front, or lot area and front setback because of the way the industrial was set up. If you look, so there's an industrial column in the existing bylaw, but then if you go to the next page in the existing and look at 626, there's the industrial district and they're not consistent. The one thing that they were inconsistent about was the rear setback, rear and side setback. One says 10, one says 20. And I took the 626 as the newer one because it's, doesn't fit the original format, so I thought, well, that's probably reasonable to say that it should be the 20 that's in 626. And like, it's, it's listed as INST, and if you look at the zoning districts, it's INS. So why is that T there?
Just a question for Charlie while we're looking at 620. A dumpster is an accessory building? How would a dumpster, I'm thinking of what we were just doing. What, what setback would apply here for a dumpster?
It's not an accessory building though, because it's on wheels.
So that's my question is.
Dumpsters, dumpsters could be in that enclosure. They're not considered a structure.
So the, the enclosure is not a structure?
I would have to defer to building inspectors.
Okay, so, my only question, I'm trying to, now I'm trying to use your table.
Yeah, right.
How do I look at what Mr. Warren said? Or Mr. Madden?
Yeah.
Whoever we pick. Okay, we moved the dumpster. How do I, what table do I go to look at to see if the setback is right?
Yeah.
For that.
You, you would look in the landscape by law to see whether or not it says something that you can't have other, other things other than landscaping in that zone.
In that zone. In that zone. Right.
Okay. I didn't, we didn't do that when we approved that minor modification, but okay. I'll go read that. Oh, except the landscaping. That's article seven. Article twelve doesn't apply to this, that project because it's special permit.
Article twelve is, is soil removal, isn't it?
Yeah, but it has other landscaping and setbacks. So I'm just.
I'm talking about article nine, I think it is.
Seven, maybe?
See, I think it's nine. Or is that parking?
Nine is parking.
Landscaping.
Nine is parking, ten is landscaping.
Tennis landscaping.
Tennis landscaping. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I tried to get from, you were trying to get to article ten. Okay. I'll look at that. But thank you. So you answered my question. I don't look at this use table for, for the, that enclosure.
Um, it should be that this minimum landscaped buffer should be set up in a similar format in my mind.
Yeah, I didn't mean to get it straight. I, I was trying to use the table. Thank you. You helped me.
Yeah. No, good question. Um, Yeah. And like there's an NA under institution, an institutional column under non-residential use. And there's an NR in impervious surface coverage.
Oh.
And commercial, uh, in the conference recreational that make no sense.
So just, uh, you're trying to follow through this. If you read article seven, which is where, which is design standards, it outlines setbacks and, um, for every district for design standards, lot frontage, uh, screening.
Yeah, it talks about, um, the design standards.
But it does talk about setbacks, frontage. Okay. So thank you. This is what I do for every, every project we come through, right?
So those were substantive. And then actually in the notes on six, two, four, down at the bottom, we've got a floor area ration. I think that's a floor area ratio. Um, and then it, it says, I, I don't really understand why all of a sudden we've thrown in FAR when we've got, um, the impervious coverage and building coverage and why, I mean, floor area ratio is building coverage, isn't it?
I think it had something to do in these small lots again, Jane.
Mm-hmm. Well, there's a small lots, um, there's accessory buildings, which is six, two, five. And then there is, um, existing small lots, existing small lots, um, is six, two, eight.
That was put in by one of the previous building commissioners. And he liked FAR as a way to, uh, control the total square footage of, uh, floor area and small lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's, it, it shows up in there all of a sudden and there's no definition for it. So it seems like there's got to be somewhere that it talks about how you calculate that. Um,
Floor area ratio is defined in the definition section of the bylaw.
Yeah, mostly these other ones are pretty self-explanatory right there. Yeah, it was definitely added because it's an upper and lowercase instead of all uppercase. So anyway, um, that might want to be added there. And then accessory buildings, uh, six, two, five and six, two, eight. I just put them in the same format as everywhere else. And.
Including the gene neural.
What's that?
The gene neural.
Yeah, I know. I, yeah, I see two typos of mine on six, twenty-six and six, twenty-seven, industrial.
There was one where you've had periods and commas. If you want, I'll find.
Okay. Yeah. Well, we can pick those up. And does average alignment show up in, uh, Yeah, no, that's not defined. This average alignment, that needs a definition. And then this sentence at the end. What? I don't understand what that sentence means.
What page are you on now?
Uh, the last page, six, twenty-eight. Total floor area shall be less than the maximum allowed by the prior smaller size category. What? What is the prior smaller size category?
That would be category one, two, or three on the left-hand side. So zero, five thousand, five, one to ten, ten, one to fifteen.
That's not clear at all. It's not the same language. It's, and I don't know if that means a prior iteration. Does, what does that mean?
And then this is just one, one article.
One.
And if you try and trace, trace through them, we have, I think, existing issues. So what, what are you asking us to do? I mean, I'm happy with your.
I don't know what to ask to do. I mean, really, I could pull out the stuff that was new and questions and leave those alone. But I guess what I'm asking at this point is to at least get it into a format that's consistent with the original and not like, not like have commercial general, uh, what, three or four sections later as a separate thing and a, it's all right. It should be under the commercial districts. If I was looking for a commercial general, I'd look, oh, I'd come to the commercial districts and go, where is it? And it's like later in the document as a separate thing, which makes no sense. So.
I would agree that this is a good first cut at, at, uh, setting up the format of the bylaws that reads more clearly and, uh, and more consistently. And we can work on the, uh, the, the consistency through the rest of the bylaw, the zoning bylaws as we go along.
Yeah.
This is the first step. I think it's a good first step, too.
I think we could take this approach where one of the files fixing sentences, fixing.
Yeah.
Which is the approach we took with article fifteen.
Right.
Mostly just trying to make it readable.
Yeah. 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 I mean, when you read a sentence and you go, what, what? Wait, what does that mean?
It's not inconsistent. Yeah, it was. Hopefully we tried to fix some of it. We haven't gotten it yet.
Jane.
So what's the next?
Just, just a question on that six, twenty-eight. You've had said AA average alignment needs to be defined.
Yeah.
Um, I think it is in terms of frontage. If you look at some of the village districts, it says that if you're building a new house and you can't read the setback.
How many to this side?
You, yeah, you go like five buildings to one side or the other.
I think it should say it here because it says.
So to put it here is what you're saying?
Yeah.
So as a part of the change, would you suggest putting it there now?
Either that or send it to, send it to the definition, send it to, send someone to article sixteen to find it. Um, but it's not even in article sixteen. It's not in the definitions. At least I can't find it.
Probably the, the best place would be under frontage.
Would be in the definitions.
The definitions, yeah, under frontage. It would make sense to put it there.
So I, I would say if you've got a designation of AA here and it says AA equals, say, average alignment, C sixteen, see article sixteen definitions.
Yeah.
If you don't want to spell it out here.
See, that could be something you can do right now. So.
Yeah.
Put it right in.
But it's, it's not, I don't, it's not in the, the definition. So if I send someone to definitions, I'm sending them to nowhere.
Oh, that's the other thing I think we should come to an agreement on. We have some places where definitions are in the article. Well, article sixteen is all definitions and.
Right.
I think as a trend, we should agree that we want to move all definitions to article sixteen and make sure they're consistent.
Right. And then just reference.
So there's actually a, a, a method that the building code uses for doing that. If there's something that shows up in the definitions, it is italicized through the text.
Oh, absolutely. That, that's for like contracts. It should, defined terms should be, should be bolded and italic.
Term that it's, that it's not bolded because we use bold for other things, but it's.
It's, it's called out. However, yeah. Okay. That's fine.
Because they weren't using italics for anything else. And that's.
Sherry.
Sorry. The, um, convention in legal documents is at the very beginning with your first defined term, you say, uh, capitalized terms are as defined in the appendix. And then you just, you don't define them anywhere except in an attachment. Yeah.
But then every, every use is, is whatever convention you've established, bold, italicized, whatever.
Exactly. Whichever. Exactly. Yeah.
That I think we should also move towards, but all the definitions should be moved to article sixteen over time because I, I don't know. They're always used consistently or.
So I think the beauty of doing italics is that if you're capitalizing for something else, you don't have a. Yeah. That's, that's correct. Yeah. And that's how the building, the IBC does it that way.
I'm, I'm okay with whatever convention as, as long as we, a convention. Yeah.
Uh, one option.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
One option, one option you have is to hyperlink the, uh, the terms to the definitions as well, too, thinking of a more, more modern.
Yeah.
Bylaw.
Yeah.
Jane, is it your recommendation to go forward with the changes you've made?
I think so. I don't think that at the moment they're not contradicting.
Right.
Anything. And, um, yeah, it's just a cleanup.
So that could be put into a zoning article and, and.
And then we could go back and substantively look at them.
Yep.
Um, but I think getting them so that they're cleaned up for now is help, in my mind is helpful.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess I would ask whether I've made any miscalculations in my interpretation of what I'm reading. I was trying to be consistent with the content, um, and just reformat.
Yep.
And in those two sections, um, six, twenty-six and six, twenty-seven that I moved to other places, I put that in here and refer you. I, I left them in here as, as, uh, sections, industrial district and general commercial district, but referred you back to, um, section six, twenty-three or six, twenty-four. Because they were, they have been put into the existing document as section headers. If you kind of need to leave that alone until we wipe them out. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. I like it.
So that means we, if we're going to take that approach, we have to, one, make that motion. But then we have to schedule a public hearing on this to get it on the one.
Well, this, yeah. And, and I think this, because it's strictly clean up and organizational, we could add this to any of the upcoming meetings as a, as a public hearing item and probably breeze through it fairly quickly.
So that would constitute notice the public hearing. Then we would have to take the step to submit it to the clerk for inclusion on the.
Inclusion on the warrant.
War. Right. Whatever the process for that is.
I can do things like this. I just pulled out that one sentence. I can put it into this so that we've got a, a full article six. This was sort of, it's a working document.
Yeah.
It's bits and pieces and I can clean this up and so that we've got a pretty much a replacement document for article six.
So we'd be looking for a motion to adopt the changes as presented, scheduled public hearing and move to submit it, uh, for inclusion on the fall warrant.
So moved.
Certainly.
Thank you. You were hanging me out to dry there for a second. We have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sherry Quirk, uh, for a vote to, uh, adopt changes as presented. Sam Corbett?
Hi.
Carl Schultz?
Hi.
Sherry Quirk?
Hi.
Mike Deppis? Listen.
Do I need to abstain since it's my word?
I wouldn't.
Yes.
And the chair votes I six, zero, zero. So could we make sure that this is on the next available, uh, agenda?
Yep, that would be the twenty-fifth.
Um, oh, we have to, we have to publish, publish this and we have to make sure we made the deadlines required timeframe for public notice before we actually have the hearing. So we'll schedule that as appropriate and let you know what time it is.
I, I, I wasn't specifying a date. I just said the, the, the next available agenda.
Next available, yes. That leaves enough time for a two-week notice. It's on the twenty-fifth.
Awesome.
Mr. Chairman, just, just as a comment, Carl and I could do the same thing with the subdivision rules and regulations up to the stormwater aspect of it.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be done, too. And just waiting until the stormwater is completed, then you could have your advertising. Have your public hearing and you're done with that.
Yeah, yes, I agree. And the subdivision gives us more flexibility because.
Yeah, we could do exactly the same thing that Jane has done for you tonight. You know, it would go smooth.
And I, I would also, we can discuss when we do that. Let's get it on the agenda, but
Yep.
because we have a lot more control over that. If we, we decide we don't want to wait for the stormwater, we could do that again quickly.
Oh, yeah.
So we could, we can make progress.
But at least you can make progress on that source. And so you don't have to revisit it again. That'll be done.
Yeah. The only thing we could, we'd have to update would be stormwater. Okay. I, let's, let's find time on, well, we got the eighteenth, so maybe we do that on the eighteenth.
Okay. That sounds good.
May I ask a question?
No.
You just did. So yes, thank you for your question. Yes.
Thank you for your question. Yeah.
As, as you've been working through these bylaws, your goal has been to read them for sense, for language, and also for consistency. Is that primarily what you've been doing?
Primarily in the past, and then since the exchange you and I had, uh, I've started thinking about like the question attorney Mason has.
Right.
Where, what problems are we having that we should, should try and figure out how to address?
That's how, that's my experience in my professional life has been, that's, that's how things get developed. Is a problem arises and you respond to it. And I think that's where changes can happen continually to these documents based on stuff we're seeing. And I think that's a logical.
Right.
Approach.
And I would argue that some of what we did with the solar bylaw was exactly that. Some of us brought to that process, okay, what kind of problems was the planning board having trying to process these bylaws? What can we do to clarify? And I think in that, I'll, I'll just say one thing that was really helpful to me in that process. Very early on, a solar developer came and said, look, I don't care what you say, what law you come up with, what, be clear. Tell us what the, we have to work with.
Yeah.
Um, and then we know what to bring forward.
Yeah. Absolutely.
And that was, that was, that was helpful to me to understand. Not only does the planning board need guidance.
They need guidance.
They need guidance. And then the third, um, constituent is, is we need to write it in such a way that our citizens understand what.
Yeah. So you need to really step back from a, a sentence and say, okay, if I revisit this sentence in a year or in five years, am I going to understand what it means? Or am I using terms that are
Right.
part of this discussion we've been having?
And that's why I'm saying some, some way of annotating the thought process would be helpful for archiving that.
Yeah. So the, the difference between what this board can do compared to the committee that I sat on rewriting that zoning bylaws, that we were doing a lot of soothsaying. We had our crystal ball out. We're, you know, trying to forecast things that were going to come. Whereas this board can react to things that you've seen empirically. So that's the difference. And that's where what this board brings to that zoning bylaw can be really valuable.
And, and I think your energy committee should take.
Our energy committee.
Yes, our energy committee should take that. If that is the case, what we're going to try and prog- Yes, our energy committee should take that. If that is the case, what we're going to try and prognosticate.
Yes.
But.
Yeah. But it, I mean, I think, I think it's also really helpful if we can bring amended bylaws forward and someone like Mike, who has seen a lot that has happened, you know, with various matters that have come before the board, you can tell us how we can make them better.
I, I think this is where you can also contact the zoning Board of Appeals and the Building Department and get a read on other problems or issues that may have arisen with the zoning bylaws.
So that may be something we should notify those two committees that we're going to look at Article six just for cleanup.
Yeah.
They might want them to be aware that.
So may have some input.
Maybe we run a copy by them and say, could you read through this?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to walk them through it if they want.
Okay.
Okay.
Before we close the board, so are we done with Article six? We made a motion, second voted. I have a question under board member comments.
Lay it on me.
Okay, this is Charlie helping Carl or Ken helping Carl. The Danny Warren project.
Yep.
Because I, I did what you said. Okay, so just, I'm going to phrase my question in a series of steps. The, the restaurant is a commercial use.
Right.
Is that correct? Because I'm, I'm going to base British Landing is a multi-unit dwelling.
Correct.
Okay, according to.
It's mixed use, actually. They have commercial space in the, in the first floor of the British Landing building, too.
Okay, well, that's not in the table that I'm looking at. Mixed use isn't in the table. So Article ten forty two, minimum landscape buffer, which talks about a budding uses. So commercial use of budding multifamily, the setback is twenty feet, not ten feet.
So if that's the case, then they will have to address that.
Did I just make a problem for somebody?
No, no, I'm not you. This, I'm looking at Article ten because you sent me to Article ten when I asked my previous question. I think there's a problem with what we told them to do in the.
Dumpster enclosure is within the buffer, the landscape buffer required under ten, Article ten.
Say that again.
That you're saying that the, the dumpster enclosure is within the buffer required by Article ten.
Correct. It, it then will not meet the twenty feet setback. Mr. Mr. Madden said, oh, the ten feet at the back of the buffer still meets the, the setback requirement. I don't think it does.
Yeah, multifamily too.
That would be a, that would be a whole issue for the entire Wareham Village District.
I'm, I'm only reading.
I, I hear you. I hear you.
I think there's a lot.
I'm just saying there's things like that, that we could go through this and find all sorts of little stuff like that. And I agree with you.
In the past, that's okay, but.
Yep.
Now we're going forward.
Yep, understood.
So am I reading up? That's why I don't like being rushed. I don't get a chance.
I think the mixed use aspect of the billion changes the definition of its land use.
Not, not in this table, though.
Table has mixed use?
No, it doesn't. It has.
It makes news changes, mixed use is not identified in that table, is it then?
So which is, which is, which is a mixed use? Is the adjoining property mixed use or is it multifamily dwelling?
Well, no.
It's mixed use.
But it's not in the table at all. So there's no setback requirement?
Oh, for. But which, which property is mixed use? The.
British Landing, because he said there's commercial.
Oh, there's commercial on the ground floor. It's not multifamily. Got it.
So then it's not listed and it doesn't have the standard to, to apply to it. So then the ten foot is correct.
Well, there's a use group that needs to.
Why would ten foot be correct? Zero foot could be correct.
Yeah, no regulation.
Is that correct? I'm, I'm not suggesting we go back and revisit it. This is me learning as we go through. So if it's, if it's silent, if it's silent in the use table, you can't do it. You're saying if it's silent here, you can do whatever you want?
It doesn't have a standard that applies to it. So it's, it's it's not restricted.
So it could be zero feet.
That's what I'm saying, yes. That's my interpretation.
Okay, no, that, that's fine. That's why.
Again.
Consistency.
Yeah, that's why I was just asking how to think. I'm not trying to reverse. We made a decision. We're going forward with it, trying to under. Okay, so I, I understand it. So there's either, there's two options. If it's silent, it either is you can't do it or you can do whatever you want.
Okay.
That works for today, but about next week.
So mixed use shows up nowhere, does it?
I, I, I haven't seen mixed use.
It was.
There is mixed use in the use table, three twenty.
Really hot button when we were doing the rewrite because.
Ken says it's in the, in three twenty.
There's your CN district, Jane.
Where is it?
It's your CN district where you suggested commercial mixed in.
Neighborhood. That's like.
Carl's right. There needs to be something included in there, another table for mixed use. And or maybe define it in these other areas such as the Onset Village and the Wareham District, because they're both going to be the same thing.
No, here we go. Residential uses apartments and mixed use buildings. Guess what? Most districts. Yes, in commercial strip and commercial general.
Which article are you looking at now, Jane?
Looking at Article three. On page, it's notated ten under residential uses. Apartments and mixed use buildings.
As if right in the general commercial and CP district.
It's, it's allowed in commercial general and, oh, and conf, no, C.
CP.
CP.
CG.
Plan commercial.
Oh, planned, right. Right, planned commercial.
What, what is, where is British Landing? What zone is that in?
WV one.
Wareham Village, WV one. So it's not allowed.
Well, it's not allowed at all.
Not allowed at all. Yeah, not even.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
Or it could be a use variance as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, this is, this is the problem that I.
So complicated. Yeah.
And that's why. So as an example, that's why I feel very uncomfortable when we're asked to rush because we don't have the opportunity to review these things and then come to advice from Ken, advice from Charlie, advice from town council, which says, okay, if it's not in the table, it's the regulations unclear, you guys can make a decision. And then I'm okay with articulating that when we make a finding and said, it's unclear based on advice from this place, this place, and this place. I'm comfortable voting yes with this determination or voting no with that determination.
Were we the ones who had to move that dumpster?
No, I, he said we were asked to move it. Who, he never said who asked him to move it.
It was moved from the first iteration. It was out near the waterfront.
It was right here.
And they pulled it back so that it wouldn't, so you wouldn't have to take big trucks and interfere with the loading zone.
But that was in the original site plan.
Yeah.
He moved it again. Which is partly.
It was located where it is now roughly in the last iteration that you approved, but I'm not sure about the tweaking of the location.
Here's the original site plan and it was right here.
Right, right at the end of the alleyway.
Right, it was, it was moved after we approved the site plan.
Yeah, it, it was down at the end of the alley when we.
It still was there?
Yeah.
I stand corrected because they had three dumpsters and we asked them to go to two. You're right. Yep.
So that's another reason. Okay, these, these are all changes that your son came up with, Danny. I don't care. You don't build what you originally said you were going to build.
Okay. It's ten emotion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Are there any staff reports?
No, I'm done. It's been a long day. It's already nine thirty. Motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherry Quirk. Take a vote to adjourn.
We don't rate yet.
Sherry.
But I'm sorry.
I.
No.
I get you a pillow. Jay.
I.
Sam. Chair vote tie. Five, one, zero.
No, no.
Oh, five, two, zero, four, two, zero.
Oh, you guys are going to hang out and have a slumber party?